Okay. It's 6:30, so we're going to start the meeting. I'm going to open the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. It's 6:30 PM on April 2nd. And we're going to do our call to order, our pledge of allegiance. And so I'd like those of you that would like to join us, to join us in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to do a vote on the agenda, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote and then a vote on the agenda.
Councilmember Egger.
Here.
Councilmember Gierengelli.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
Mayor Blash.
Here.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Second was Mr. Gierengelli, I believe?
Yes.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gierengelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So we also want to do one extra thing that's not on the agenda, which is a report out on our closed session today. So, town attorney Coulson, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. I do not normally comment on ongoing litigation, but the council has authorized me to make a report out from our closed session we just held on the Kunsfi Town of Fairfax matter. There was a hearing yesterday. There is another hearing coming up on May 20th. And during this time, we will be following the judicial, the court process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I am going to read the land acknowledgement and then the meeting protocol. So, the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. So, meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to facilitate the conduct of the people's business and encourage civil engagement in town council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in silent mode. Shouting, clapping, booing, stomping, or other disruptive behavior during public comment or council deliberation is discouraged in order to provide a respectful and comfortable environment for all residents to express their point of view. Clapping is acceptable, of course, for items such as police pinning, proclamations, welcoming new staff and council members, and other celebratory announcements like the artist-in-residence process we just went through. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And I just wanted to mention one thing because there was some confusion last time. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about how the meeting will go. So, we're going to, in a few minutes, go to open time for public expression. After that, we will have a public hearing as an agenda item, and then three regular agenda items, and then the consent calendar. And I just wanted to note, because I think some people didn't get what this was about, generally when the council is hearing a regular item on the agenda, there's sort of a process that we go through. So, we hear a staff report or a presentation, and then the council asks questions, and then we move to public comment on that particular item. And then after that, we have council deliberation and statements. And part of the reason we do that is that we expect the council to come in with a fairly open mind and be willing to listen to the public and other council members before coming to a decision, which is why we don't do the statements before we hear from the public. And so I think some people thought I was cutting somebody off. I was just trying to redirect them to make their comments at another point in the meeting. So, I'm now going to move to open time for public expression. So, this is up to 30 minutes. And this is time to address the council on matters not on the agenda. All comments are limited to two minutes. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any agendized item. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued at the end of the agenda. So, if you ask questions and things, it's not that we're being rude. We just can't do them as part of this process. Okay. So, let's get started.
Good evening. Cindy Swift, Fairfax, and I'm speaking as a representative of the Cascade Canyon Firewise Neighborhood Steering Committee. Saturday, May 3rd, is National Wildfire Community Preparedness Day, and there will be an in-person wildfire education event here in the women's club, starting at 1:00 PM that day. We're very fortunate to have as our speaker wildfire expert Battalion Chief Todd Lando, wildfire mitigation specialist of Central Marin Fire Department, and president of FireSafe Marin. It's been a long time since there has been an in-person wildfire education event in Fairfax, and this is a great opportunity to ask questions about recent fires and to hear about some of the work that has been done here over the last few years. In addition to Battalion Chief Lando, we will have representation from the Fairfax Police Department and the Ross Valley Fire Department, as well as FireSafe Marin and local firewise neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jody Timms, Cascade Drive. I am not in support of the recall petitions. This is, in my humble opinion, a horrifying—there is a horrifying amount of myths and disinformation, AKA lies, floating around our community these days. Someone from Sleepy Hollow posted on Nextdoor that none of us who are protesting these petitions every Sunday at the parcade from 11:00 to 12:30, none of us even live in Fairfax. Actually, the Sunday crowd has always included current and former council members and many longtime community members who all live in Fairfax. Instead, he asserted we were all being bussed in by Marin DSA, for God's sake. Frankly, I find the red scare blowing through Fairfax to be a bit paranoid and certainly mean-hearted. I have served as a council-appointed volunteer for more than 10 years, as the Fairfax Commissioner on Aging and as a member of the Climate Action Committee. During that time, I've worked with lots of council members, none of whom have represented everything I value in local governance. Some have forgotten we are a representative democracy. Every citizen has the right to vote, to elect politicians that represent them as much as possible, whether they lean left toward democratic socialism or toward the far-right or libertarianism. Fairfax is a diverse community. We are not all the same and do not all only want conservative, budget-cutting, climate-denying, exclusionary policies and representatives to govern us. There were three council openings in November, and a handful of extreme-minded citizens are mad as hell they didn't win all three. So, instead of acceptance, they're eager to spend $60,000 on a recall, forgetting when your side is not in the majority of the next election. That's how democracy works.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Doug Kelly from Fairfax. I want to bring your attention to something. In January 1st, 2023, AB 2449 came into effect. According to AB 2449, which the governor signed in September of 2022, board members, commissioners, counselors must attend meetings in person. Board members may participate remotely, but only pursuant to the requirements and limitations described below. One, for just cause, which is defined as, one, childcare or caregiving, need of a child, parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling, spouse, or domestic partner; or, two, a contagious illness; three, a need related to a physical or mental disability; or, four, to travel for the board or another public agency. To participate by just cause, the member must notify the board of the need to meet remotely and provide a general council description of the reason. This notice can be given as late as the start of the meeting. Importantly, remote appearances for just cause can only occur twice a year per board member. The second reason is for an emergency circumstance, which is described as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents the member from attending in person. The member must request to participate remotely and provide a general description that is 20 words or less. The board must approve any— I'm going to skip the next sentence. The board must approve any request and can take action to do so, even if it's not included on the posted agenda. Remote appearances are limited to three consecutive months. I've looked back at the meetings of the planning commission as far back as last February. Mimi Newton's been attending remotely for well over a year in violation of AB 2449, and she certainly does not ask for a vote or give any description. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Richard Pedemonte, Baywood Court, Fairfax. Well, the talk of the town is the recall election, and personally, I was completely shocked to see that this is happening already. You guys have only been council, new council, for three or four months now. And my question to all of you is, is it really that hopeless that already you can't get along, and disagreements are so bad, and malfeasance has been insinuated about people that you have to go to this extreme and go for a recall? I would suggest that maybe you guys try and get together and work as a team. I mean, a great thing to do would maybe get together and have dinner over at Deer Park. Don't talk about town business, but talk about your kids and your families and get to know one another. You're all fine people, and I just don't see how already there's so much animosity that we have to have a recall to reconfigure our town council. Secondly, I think the timeline is really problematic in that we have 90 days to collect the signatures, 30 days until the election, and then they have to—30 days to verify all the signatures, and if it goes through, then another 30 days to have an election. So, we're looking at four or five months of precious time during which we could be doing much better things. So, I think that the level of discourse and—we see town council meetings is only going to get bigger and bigger and worse and worse as the months go on and the votes get counted. So, I'm just saying that I think it'd be better served if you were taking care of the business at hand. There's lots of things that need to be done. The agendas are pretty long, starting with the school-street-plaza problem we're going to have and— [bell dings] and other things that are on our docket. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. At the last meeting, Michael McIntosh and I tried to make a comment about future agenda items. I know mine was going to take about 15 seconds. I don't know how long Michael's was going to take. We were told that we were out of order, that we were not allowed to comment, and it was reiterated several times in what didn't seem a particularly civil manner, considering that there are civil rights to make comments. So, I don't know if—you have a booklet like this? I got it from the Attorney General's office, so I'm assuming it's accurate. It's the Brown Act. Now, it's obviously a lengthy book. I'm sure that you all didn't memorize it, but I would think at least you got through the first page. And at the bottom of the first page, it says, "Before or during consideration of any agenda item, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on the item." That's pretty clear. There was a lot of talk about how several members of the town council never break the law. Well, this is a law. They had the attorney tell us that we were out of order. I was told that I'm not an attorney and that I had to listen to the attorney because she's an attorney. Well, guess what? She's wrong. It says right here in black and white, "From the State's Attorney General's Office." So, you violated your oath of office, which you took freely and without reservation to uphold the laws, the constitution of the state of California. Therefore, you violated your oath. You violated our civil rights, and you should resign.
Thank you. Janet Coulson, could you clarify a little bit about the law around future agenda items and town manager's report and other things that are not deliberation items?
The operative word in what he just read is consider, consideration, before the town considers an item. And so, we take the position that the manager's report is a one-way flow of information or communication to the council from the manager. The council is not considering it. They're not discussing it. They're not deliberating on it. And for future agenda items, it's merely a request to put an item on a future council meeting, which, of course, you can do. That's also in the Brown Act, and that there's no consideration of those items at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please.
First off, I would also like to correct your attorney. She's misled you many times before. Now, you had an opportunity to see a book in writing from the Attorney General. You should really think about following the law. Specifically, I'm here tonight to talk about fungible money, specifically Measure E. The Ross Valley School Department—for elementary, excuse me—adopted a budget of $31 million. Within that $31 million, their income is only $29.6 million, leaving an operational deficit of $1.4 million on an annual basis. Within that budget, they allocate $10 million to the teachers and $5.7 million to administrative staff. So, this small group at 5.7. They are now looking to raise a tax, which will cost all of us 52 cents per square foot. I am entitled, and two months ago, you let the positive side speak to this, so I shall speak. When that tax goes through on an annual basis of approximately $3 million, if that all went to the teachers as they are advertising, that'd be a 30% raise. They're not. They have taken pre-obligated money within their budget of $1.5 million, pull it aside for the administrative staff. The resulting $3 million tax will come in to satisfy the now-created fungible deficit of 1.5 for the teachers and then also give them a 15%—sorry—raise. This has been verified, and I've spoken in front of the union. I've spoken to the executive director, and so I'm just hoping that more people can understand. This 52 cents per square foot includes any and all improvements, that your house, each floor. This includes your garage, and certain improvements can be included. There is no appeals process. It's not defined. But most importantly, it's going to impact every single apartment and every little business because this is where these fines will be passed down. And last, I really hope that you guys start following the rules. Mark is taking the time, and I brought this up last month, to follow the Brown Act.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was wondering if we can clarify a little bit about points of order in the meeting. My understanding is that we are taking public comment. It has to be about something within our jurisdiction, or is that not the case?
Well, subject matter jurisdiction, there's not supposed to be any campaigning or advocacy for a measure that's already on. I will note, there is no recall election as of yet, so that's not a measure that's on a ballot.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure we're clear. Go ahead.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, Fairfax. I'm wondering why, over the past three years, councilmembers Kohler, Blash, and Hellman have voted unanimously to approve consent calendars that included financial reporting that either had hidden or was missing $941,000 of credit card activity. Only the checks written to pay off the cards were included in the reporting. It's not as if you were not aware. I have come up here over and over again, over the years, asking for this detail to be included. It's possible that there is no malfeasance. There probably isn't. There may not be, but you don't know that because you have not looked at where this money has been spent. And there have been, you know, travel, meals, expensive computers, expensive pieces of furniture, building projects. Who knows? Finally, after I did my Public Records Act request in this meeting, there is some detail on credit card expenditures. Now, I think that is fiscally very irresponsible. The only person I've seen coming up and talking about money on the reporting, the month of reporting, is councilmember Egger and councilmember Gierengelli. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if we can follow up when we do our budget meeting to hear a little bit more about what Ms. Benson was talking about, about credit card expenses, because I think it would be good to get a better understanding and kind of explicate that when we discuss the budget, which the council will be doing starting April 18th. Is that something we can do?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. And I want to note that the credit card detail has been in this packet and the packet before it. It's not required. It is simply a courtesy, particularly for Ms. Benson, because she's been asking for it.
Okay. Thank you. Hi. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Jo Carson. I've lived in Fairfax since 1986, and I'm here to talk about better approaches to the school-street-plaza development and any future housing developments. Many of you are familiar with permaculture and urbanism, and some of you might know about edenicity. These concepts focus on designing sustainably abundant towns and cities, places that not only have a neutral carbon footprint, but also enhance residents' lives and build community while protecting natural resources and fostering biodiversity. Edenicity in particular offers innovative approaches to urban living. It minimizes car use by having a shared electric vehicle hub and provides sustainable energy through solar and advanced wind technology on rooftops. Rooftop gardens provide organic food, served in an onsite café. Residents benefit from a centralized laundry service, so no need for individual washers and dryers. There's daycare and a playground. All of the services are run by professional folks who live in the building, so they are not commuting. Each tenant gets an electric bicycle, and shared spaces foster creativity, performance, and community connection. Water reuse is minimized by using swales, rainwater harvesting, and gray water reuse on fruit trees and gardens. These ideas are working. For example, a development called Kilosh in Portland, Oregon, uses these principles and has a 700-person waiting list for just 32 units. Let that sink in. A car-free project in Tempe, Arizona, called Culdesac successfully incorporates many of these elements. Fairfax should consider an ordinance requiring new multi-unit buildings to adopt these practices. This would reduce car traffic, build community, support sustainability, and make Fairfax a model for others. I'm providing the council with guidelines and resources on how to make this happen with a focus on the proposed school-street-plaza development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, please. Okay. You can go ahead. When the light—
I've lived in Fairfax for 24 years. I returned for a minute to last month's meeting. I took my turn at this mic, as did my husband and others whom we encouraged to attend to speak in support of Mayor Blash and Vice Mayor Hellman. This ruffled some feathers as we were unfamiliar faces. For those of you who spoke here and said that we had no business speaking since we couldn't possibly care about the town as much as you do, this couldn't be further from the truth. I invite you to join me for a cup of tea sometime so we can talk about our mutual love for Fairfax. Speaking of truths, in December, the Marin IJ editors addressed Fairfax's conflict over housing, pointing out that it is state lawmakers setting quotas that mandate local jurisdictions to allow development at a pace that will dramatically alter local landscapes. That's true. Also true is that no member of this town council—and honestly, nobody I know, probably nobody in this room—is in favor of a six-story development. That plan is coming directly from Mill Creek, the real estate developer. Everyone should know this by now. But I read in this same editorial something I didn't know, and I'm quoting. Frank Egger and Mike Gierengelli have already talked about challenging the state's pro-housing laws, a large and potentially costly task for a small town. I have done a bit of research, just a bit, on this, but I have yet to find evidence of a successful lawsuit. Huntington Beach tried to sue the state and lost at a huge cost to them. This should be a loud warning to Fairfax to not go down that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Turn the mic on.
Hi. I'm Michael Rosenthal, Cascades resident for more than 40 years. I'm here to speak out against the effort to recall Liesl Blash and Stephanie Hellman. The recall is an extreme measure designed to remove elected officials who have engaged in egregious misconduct. In recent years, it's been used way too often merely because of political differences, which is what is going on right now here. I, too, have profound political differences with a couple of the current council members. However, I wouldn't support recalling them unless they were seriously misusing their office. I urge everyone not to sign the recall petitions. Furthermore, the recall campaigns against both Liesl and Stephanie are grossly misleading. Here's a tip: Don't rely on Nextdoor for your news. Our mayor and vice mayor are not three-headed communist socialist monsters. They are thoughtful, caring people who are doing a thankless job. A big issue for the recallers is the homeless encampment, but the anti-camping ordinance they supported already passed the council. The only reason the town hasn't yet cleared the encampment is because they're under court orders not to act pending a lawsuit against the town. Defying judges' orders may fly in a lawless White House, but not here. School Street Plaza also figures heavily in the recall campaign, and Marlene already explained why that doesn't make sense. I have an appeal to the folks behind the recall. Let's stop this enormous waste of time, effort, and money on a recall that would have zero impact on both of those issues you profess to care so much about. Instead, let's work together to convince our state senator and state assembly member to fight to change the laws that are allowing developers to ignore local regulations like height limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Sit down. Okay. Hi. My name is Gail Hagan, and I've lived here in Fairfax for more than 40 years. I'm here today to speak in favor of the hard-working elected town council members and to object to the needless distraction of the recall effort against them. As we know from the long council agendas and the very real problems we face in Fairfax, there are many tough decisions the council members face. The housing shortage is the root of many of our problems. The council is faced with addressing it and simultaneously abiding by state and federal rules beyond its power to control. The conditions of our roads are terrible. The council's efforts to deal with that have been decried by some of the same people whose strategy is to attack individuals rather than look for workable solutions to real problems. Recalls are a powerful and important protection for voters. They are designed for cases of criminality and corruption, not for political disagreements and personal attacks. Our political system is designed to be a forum for discussion of issues, exploration of alternatives, and collaborative problem-solving. By attacking individuals rather than addressing issues in dispute, this recall effort undermines collaboration, it destroys trust, and it creates a hostile atmosphere that will discourage future good candidates from serving the town. We need everyone's good ideas. Who will want to serve when the bullies stand ready against them? Only bullies— Only bullies will want to serve. So I encourage the council to get on with its important business and the citizens here to resist the recall. Thank you.
Next, please. You need to turn it on so the little red light comes on. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Harvard. I live on Willow Avenue in Fairfax, and this is my son Bennett Geeson, and he goes to Hidden Valley and is a first grader. Next week, ballots will be mailed to everyone, all voters in the Ross Valley School District for Measure E, and they will be due on the 6th. This is a renewal of an existing parcel tax.
Thank you. And I'm letting people go ahead with this just because we already let one person speak in opposition. I don't know if that's okay, but, okay.
Hi, my name is Jessica Kay. I am also a parent in Manor, I'm sorry, in Fairfax at RVSD. I have a 10-year-old daughter in fifth grade, actually, she's 11, and I'm coming here to speak strictly about the facts for Measure E. It is a renewal of an existing parcel tax. There is an adjustment in terms of how it impacts square footage. The way that funding works in the RVSD school district is we do have years where we have deficits and years where we have surpluses based on the fact that we sometimes are community-funded and sometimes we are funded by the state because of the way that we have to balance. And how that impacts our district in particular is we have the lowest-paid schoolteachers in the entire county. Regardless of where we fit in terms of our income, they are impacted by the fact that they cannot get raises and live in our town. Every year, they go through and renegotiate. Because we are constantly in this place, the parcel tax gives us the security to give them a three- or four- or five-year contract each time we negotiate with the union. What has been happening over the course of the past four years that we've been involved and as we've been involved as parents of the community, and forgive me, I'm very, it sucks to be a woman and be mad because we cry. But what I do want to share is this has a huge impact in terms of teacher retention, attracting in teachers to our district. They are not being paid well. They can go to Ross, they can go to Ross District and make $20,000 more. They can go to Drake. They have the same exact credentials as White Hill does, and they get paid $25,000, $30,000 more a year. This does not impact administrative. I understand that that's what somebody else has brought up, but this strictly stays within our teacher salary in our district. It's not an administrative cost. I want to make sure we share that fact with you all. It's a renewal of an existing parcel tax and...
Thank you so much. Next, please, and we're getting close to about 30 minutes, but I think we have room for a few more people. Okay, is it 30 minutes total? Or, oh, okay. So I'm ticking two more, and then we're going to Zoom.
My name's Derek Ossbacher, and I've been a resident of Fairfax for about three years. Just a quick note before I begin, I'm not someone that generally usually speaks in settings like this. I'm more used to the back and forth of board discussions within the context of the job that I do, so a little unfamiliar with this. I wanted to say a few things about the recall effort. I'm strongly opposed to the recall of Liesl Blash and Stephanie Hellman. My partner and I relatively, as I mentioned, new to Fairfax. We bought our home about three years ago, but we've known this town for decades, driving through, living in San Francisco for the last 30-some years. What drew us here was the passion and the energy of the community, its progressive spirit, and the deep connection to nature. Fairfax is truly a great place to live. You know, we feel that way every time we walk down the street around here. Since moving here, we follow the council meetings closely on Zoom. I'll be honest, it wasn't always easy to watch over the last couple of years, but that's democracy in action, and it could be messy, but it matters. I haven't agreed with every single decision that Liesl and Stephanie have made over the years, but that's really not the point. I believe they are smart, informed, and courageous leaders. They're showing up and taking on difficult issues, issues that won't make everyone happy, but that needs to be addressed. That kind of leadership deserves respect and not to be recalled. So, thank you.
Okay, so I've run a little over, so I said I would have one other person speak, then we're moving to Zoom. The rest of the comments are going to have to happen at the end of the meeting if people are still here. We have a really packed agenda tonight, so I'm sorry for the people waiting in line. I haven't had that many people wanting to speak for a while, and let them go for way too long last time. This time, we really have a packed agenda with some important items we need to get to. So one more in person, and then the Zoom folks. You can speak into the microphone.
Press the button, please.
I was asked to ask for a show of hands of people who are against the recall. Okay. All right. My name's Gina Ida. My family's lived in the Cascades and Fairfax for 25 years. Our daughter went to the public schools here, and we all think that Fairfax is a very special place, but it doesn't...
Hold it down to your mouth a little.
...need to do.
Hold it down. Yeah.
We all think that Fairfax is a special place, but it doesn't exist in a vacuum. Housing scarcity and homelessness were already pressing issues in 2015 when Christ Lutheran, which was my church, started looking into leaving a legacy. There was a lot of support for the affordable housing project that we came up with, but there was also a lot of vocal opposition. We spent many months sharing our plans in council meetings and working sessions. The extensive delays caused by the opposition were costly. Our funding plans fell apart, we lost grants, construction costs rose, new funding sources imposed new restrictions. We thought many times that the project would fail. If it had, the likely alternative would have been a private developer who would have built one or two single-family luxury homes in that location. At that time, Liesl was just an interested community member, but she took it upon herself to research our project, address community issues, communicate our goals, speaking on our behalf in council. The support she gathered was essential to Victory Village becoming real, and I was happy to support her when she decided to run for council. Housing scarcity and homelessness are two of the biggest issues facing all communities today, and they are not going to go away, no matter who is on council. We have dedicated public servants on the council right now, Liesl and Stephanie, working to address these and other critical issues in a serious, thoughtful, and lawful way. A recall will cost $60,000. Surely, there are better uses for this money and our time and energy than in costly divisive battles that will derail progress.
Thank you so much. Can we move to Zoom, and then we will move on with the rest of the meeting?
The first speaker on Zoom is Kristin, followed by Dorothy. Kristin, you are unmuted.
Hi, I wanted to let everyone know that they're invited to attend the joint forum by the Marin County Commission on Aging and the Emmeritas Students College of Marin, or ESCOM. It's on May 20th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Jonas Center at Marin College, 1800 Ignacio Boulevard, Building 19 in Novato. The event theme is Power of Connection: Creating, Building, and Sustaining Community as We Age. There will be two panel discussions focusing on the theme, one rural and one urban suburban. The rural panel will focus on West Marin, and the urban suburban panel will focus on Northern, Central, and Southern Marin County. The keynote speaker will be Stacy Torres, Assistant Professor of Department of Social and Behavioral Sciences at the University of California, San Francisco. Ms. Torres is the author of At Home in the City: Growing Old in America. There will be a buffet lunch. Registration is now open, and the suggested donation is $25. And then another event on Monday, April 14th, 2025, the Marin County Commission on Aging General Meeting will have a presentation at the Marin Wildlife Protection Authority Building on 1600 Los Gamos Road in San Rafael. The presentation will cover what the Marin County Area Agency on Aging accomplished in fiscal year 2024, 2025, and the proposed programs for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Your comments on the proposed plan are welcome. For more information about these events and other information about aging, call 415-473-INFO or 415-473-4636. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
The next speaker is Dorothy, followed by Kevin. Dorothy, you are unmuted.
Thank you for your time. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Dorothy Bennett-Cray. I've worked for eight years in Fairfax, and I've been able to rent for the last few years in Fairfax. I'm here to state that I oppose the recall. This effort feels less like accountability and more like a group unhappy with recent votes, not misconduct and governance. So thank you, guys, for doing this job and being here. Recalls should be reserved for serious offenses, not wielded as political weapons. And as someone paying attention to current news, it worries me when local politics are starting to mirror the toxicity of Trump-era tactics. What makes Fairfax magical has been the community, the character, and civility and creativity. Thank you to Fairfax Civility website for clarifying the recall process, as Nextdoor seems to be getting many things confused. I say we end this distraction and focus on what makes Fairfax thrive and make decisions that help all people, so you guys can get back to business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
The next speaker is Kevin, followed by Cindy. Kevin, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I'll be quick. Good evening, council. There's a silly rule that states that you have to bring something up or write to the council for an agenda meeting item, or that could be coming up in the future. This is regarding School Street Plaza, and what I'm asking is for the town to establish some communication with the developer of School Street Plaza that investigates the member of residents, the prior residents that had been at that site within the last five years. There could be up to 13, possibly even more if you include the family of frogs. And that was not included on the SB 330 application filed by the developer. And within state law, there are some requirements that are equally as responsible from the town's perspective to ensure that residential units there, that those units are no net loss to the end result project, as well as some protections for the residents that are going to, there's a right to first refusal. So I would ask that the town go ahead and start that communication with the developer and try to find out some answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. And next, please.
The next speaker is Cindy, followed by PJ. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Cindy Ross here, a longtime Fairfax resident since the late 1980s. And some of the speakers here have been much more eloquent than I think I can be this evening. I'm feeling really frustrated and a little bit emotional, so I'm not going to rehash some of the things that other people before me have said, but I do want to speak about the recall effort and say that I can understand some of the frustration of people that feel that sometimes town council members don't listen to all residents, or at least not to all residents equally. They sometimes don't take action on things that they should and waste a lot of time with pet projects, with ideology, you know, and a lot of money on consultants. But I'm also concerned that some of the people promoting the recall are actually trying to govern the town themselves without being elected, which sounds frighteningly familiar to me, you know, given the situation that's going on nationally. And I'm really concerned that they also have some hidden agendas, and they're trying to silence people who, you know, who don't believe, who don't agree with them politically. And I just want to say I'm really, really, really getting tired of all the hostility and feeling like I'm living in the middle of a civil war where people on all sides are trying to silence me. And I just want to get back to, you know, there was a time when I used to think Fairfax was literally the best place in the world to live, and I just want to go back there. Thank you.
Thank you. So the last person is PJ?
There are currently five raised hands on Zoom.
I think we can only do, we said four people, and so we can do PJ, and we have to stop because we are actually like five or six or seven minutes beyond the time we are supposed to run for, and then the rest of the comments can come at the end of the meeting, but we do have a packed agenda.
Okay. PJ is the next speaker. PJ, you are unmuted.
This is PJ, Fairfax resident and parent in Ross Valley School District, speaking solely on my own behalf. My first priority speaking here tonight is to support our town's public elementary and middle school teachers who, like most public service workers, are severely and shamefully underpaid. Our soon-to-be mailed special election ballots, you know, passing this measure would be one important way we can begin to ameliorate that. I know I would not be able to express how much this would mean to our teachers nearly as well as they have, and so I urge everyone to listen to comments they have made and really try to understand how harmful their current level of compensation is for them. The school board meetings are available online. Here are a couple of suggestions for parts of those meetings everyone should listen to, March 27, March 6, and January 31st meetings from last year. Our community needs this and more. This is an issue where we have to catch up. I think it would be fair if teachers were paid enough to reasonably afford to live in communities in which they teach, considering that not a single teacher comes even close to having a salary at area median income despite having a pay scale for teachers where the highest paid staff gets almost twice as much as the lowest paid staff. It seems clear to me that even with the extra funds from the renewed parcel tax, salaries would still be far too low. I've been a consistent critic of how the district's budget is set, and I've also maintained that even if all my critiques were addressed, the district would still need plenty more funding. Some issues like our ability to support special education needs requires more investment to help build a team to keep costs in-house and efficient. A leading study from the National Bureau of Economic Research establishes that teachers' pay is so inadequate that the study found a 1% increase in spending on teacher salaries increases housing prices in that community by 2%. This is a rare win-win opportunity for our community, and it'd be a shame to miss it because of anti-public-school ideology or misguided reflexive anti-tax sentiment that just gets wrong on the numbers.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm sorry for the people who want to speak, but I just think we do need to move on, and I kind of blew it and missed that we were at the end of the time. So I'd like to...
I have a comment.
We need to move to a public hearing?
Did we fix the sound on these call-ins? Because I heard about half of it at the most.
Yeah, me too. There were a few I couldn't hear. I think that is a function of their, is that a function of us or them when they call and we can't, it's fuzzy? Is there anything that can be done to fix that? Okay, okay, we'll talk to the media person and see if there's some way, I agree with you, I couldn't hear some of them, if I can fix that. No, there were just some fuzzy, very fuzzy for a few people.
Mayor, if I may, just ask a question. Is it possible to have the folks that call in, their comments show up on the screen?
Yeah, we can't do that right now.
The communications today, you could get a telephone that puts up the verbal...
We can't go into like a discussion now of like the possible ways that we could, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, but the possible ways that we could do this, but we could look into this and you could send us, sorry, send a suggestion to the town clerk about maybe other ways that we could, you know, do this. But I wanted to address the key issue, which was that it's hard to hear people, and we do need to be able to hear them. So we can talk about suggestions about how to run the meeting with different types of interfaces some other time. I did want to get to the public hearing because it's important, so I am going to open the public hearing and... Okay, I was told that I opened the public hearing before the staff report. Can I please clarify? Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing, and this is the public hearing on ADUs. And if the staff could give the staff report, that would be great.
Can I just mention, I know we have a supplement, and I think you should mention that there's a supplement that should be on the dais out there or on the, okay.
Yeah, there's a supplement that deletes a paragraph on page four, and I have a slide that will describe that here.
Okay, well, we just want to make sure that the public can find...
There should be some in the back, yep. So I need to share my screen. It's, there we go. Okay, this is, item is to discuss changes to the regulations that apply to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. It is a... It is a public hearing. So, this is in response to two new bills that the state legislature passed recently, AB 2533 and SB 1211. They both became effective on January 1st, 2025, so they supersede existing regulations. So, these rules are currently in effect. So, we are kind of chasing after it and adopting our ordinance to catch up. We can modify our regulations a little bit within the context of state law. So, that would be the reason why we'd want to do that as soon as possible. There's also various editorial revisions that we need to ensure clarity and some corrections that we need to make to be consistent with state law. So, the recommended action would be to conduct a public hearing, and then when we get to the recommendation, the staff would recommend that the council waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. So, first, state law is AB 2533. What this does primarily is expands amnesty for unpermitted ADUs. These are ADUs that were built prior to January 1st, 2020. The current state law applies to ADUs built before 2018, so it gives folks a couple extra years. The town is also required to provide applicants with a checklist of substandard building conditions, because this envisions ADUs that were built in the past that didn't have the benefit of permits. So, they are most likely substandard in some way, and so the town would be required to provide a list of where they are substandard. I don't think we've ever done this in Fairfax, but the homeowners are allowed to obtain a third-party inspection if they desire. The other thing that it does is the local agency can only review for compliance with health and safety standards, so we can't require that they completely bring the old ADUs up to modern building code standards right away. We're required to give them a five-year window in order to do that. Now, if there's something that is hazardous or dangerous, then we can make findings to allow us to not permit in those cases. And we are also prohibited from imposing penalties for unpermitted uses. The second Senate bill is 1211. This has a number of provisions. The first is we can't require replacement parking if uncovered off-street parking spaces are required. So, for example, if an ADU were to be built where a driveway is located, and this adds to the previous provision that if an ADU is built where a garage is located, you can't require that that parking be replaced. So, basically, you can eliminate the parking and not have to replace it. So, it could result in, you know, parking shortages in neighborhoods, but the state says we can't require those to be replaced. It adds, it clarifies some definitions of living spaces. The other provision it does applies to multifamily properties, and this is an expansion of the number of multifamily units that can be allowed on a property. So, the new law says up to eight detached ADUs can be allowed if there's a multifamily dwelling. Now, you can only match the number of existing multifamily units. So, for example, if you have a fourplex, state law says you have to allow them to build another fourplex on the site. If you have an eightplex, you have to allow another eightplex, but you don't have to allow more than those eight units. It also clarifies that local agencies are not permitted to apply objective development standards on certain classes of ADUs. So, this is things such as the design standards, basically, design and architectural standards. So, at the planning commission hearing, we did clarify some things. The planning commission caught a few definitions that we could add to help clarify the intent of the code. We also added the full list of zoning districts where ADUs are permitted. We clarified some development standards. There was also some fuzzy area where whether the rental term is 31 days or longer, or 30 days or less, so we just specified, clarified that is 31 days or longer. And we also clarified some enforcement mechanisms. We did add a couple of objective standards where we can apply them, because there are certain conditions where you can't apply objective design standards if it's like a new detached ADU under certain conditions. So, we added those. Those were related to kind of dark sky provisions to minimize light pollution, and also provisions requiring that materials and colors match the existing building. There was also, the planning commission also expressed concerns related to the structures that have been built without permits. They were concerned that they really should be required to be brought up to building modern building code standards. Our hands are a little bit tied on that because we are, because the state law specifically addresses that issue and requires that the town approve ADUs that were built and only apply more limited health and safety standards. So, but they were comforted a little bit that there is that five-year window where things have to be brought up to building code standards. Couple corrections, and this provision actually has actually been in our code for a while, but there's a limit on the size of an ADU that it can't exceed 50% of the floor area. And then there's an 850-square-foot limit on a one-bedroom unit and a 1,200-square-foot limit on a two-bedroom unit, and these are for a conversion of an existing space. State law doesn't allow us to impose those size limits on conversions. It only allows us to impose those on new construction. So, anyway, so we are, this is a change that's to your packet, and this is also what's in the back that Councilmember Kohler mentioned. So, we would just recommend that number four that's shown on this slide is just deleted, and that will correct the mistake.
What page is that on the supplement? Because we can't follow that.
Page three, I believe.
Page three of the new supplement? Okay, I see it.
Yep.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And then the other, I just added a graphic just to show. Yeah, so it's page three, and it's D1A. We select delete number four. And then just to note that the size limits would still apply to kind of those new structures and new constructions. So, it's not, we're not eliminating the size requirements, just where we are required to, per state law. The other topic, and I've heard from Councilmember Kohler that this has been something that has been done in the past, was the amnesty program to kind of extend that out 10 years from when we adopt new ADU provisions. So, currently, it is, this is the kind of, under, on page 5, D2C, there's a long paragraph that talks about processing fees, and basically, the summary is that ADUs are only required to pay 50% of the processing fees. And then there's also an extended amnesty period for ADUs that were built without the benefit of a permit. So, we would suggest or recommend that you can extend that out 10 years if you would like. So, this would just be changing the 2032 to 2035.
And just, can I just clarify? So, I brought this back way back, I think in 2015, to allow folks to legalize unpermitted ADUs. And every time...
Right now, we just, for lack of a better word, we make an educated guess, which is permitted by HCD currently, but in the future, they're going to be looking for kind of more evidence to justify where we, how we categorize those units.
Okay, and there's no accountability. I mean, I could tell you I'm charging $2,000 and then charge zero or charge $5,000. It's just self-reported information.
Correct, yes, self-reported, yes.
Got it.
Right, so nobody's going to be checking up on people, or you just ask them to provide that?
We would just ask them, and then there's kind of an annual, an annual survey like Linda currently does. She does an annual survey and just asks people if they would mind letting us know.
And they can refuse?
Well, technically, the way it's written, it's required.
Oh, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from council members?
Are we going to hear from the public first?
Well, we're doing questions, and then, so right now, we're just doing questions, then we're going to move to the public, and then we're going to deliberate and have comments about it. So, I just wanted to make sure we have the questions from the council member for clarification before we move to public comment, and then we'll deliberate.
Well, there's so many conflicts with our existing ordinance, it's unbelievable. And I'm not sure just how valid the new state law is. I'll explain the conflicts. You're going to run into major conflicts.
Okay.
After the public speaks.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. So, I would like to move to the public comment, and because it's a public hearing, we're giving people three minutes. So, let's go ahead with the first speaker.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, speaking from downtown Fairfax. I want to thank everybody from the public that is here this evening and has finally tuned in to what's been going on, even if some of us might have differing opinions. And I want to point out why it's important for them to tune in and understand when people get cut off from presenting and shunted to the end. So, I'd like to invite all of them to wait until the end of the meeting to hear everything that gets said. That being said, the meeting started off here with Mayor Blash indicating that her, that minds should not be made up, but yet there's been unanimous votes ahead of time and allegations substantiated, supposedly allegations of Brown Act violations, where apparently the town attorney has directed people how to vote prior.
Does this have anything to do with the agenda?
Are you talking about the ADUs, or are you talking about the way we're running these? So, you talk about the ADUs?
Yes, I'll tie it together, and I'd like my time back.
I think you need to talk about the ADUs, thank you.
I'd like my time back, because you frequently interrupt me, and the former mayor frequently interrupted me also. So, this is how it goes here in Fairfax. Now, related to ADUs, this town was torn apart by council members in front of you, two of which are subject to recall, torn apart for years by extreme, the most extreme rent controls in California. When the people got to vote on those rent controls, they voted them out. Now, these council members are subject to recall. Now, via a back door, you're trying to bring in data that's going to be required that could impact somebody's ability to rent a place in the future via restrictions on ADUs. Now, I'm going to make my point. I have asked, other people have asked, for figures on ADU production, but the ADU production figures have not been given, because we were told, well, we changed the method. Well, why not? Well, why not report the apple method and the orange method? Why not show the public how ADU production has plunged in Fairfax because of the policies that the former town council took? And why back this tonight where you're mandating required reporting of people's rental information? It's an invasion of privacy. Let it be voluntary and do things to produce ADUs, not to backdoor more rent control. Please, I guess you haven't learned your lesson.
Thank you, next please.
Mark Bell, downtown Fairfax, almost. Like Todd, I'm glad that people are here. It's good to see them. Good to see them participating. However, they seem to have missed in the meeting protocol, the second paragraph there, where ridiculing the character or motives of members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Now, I'm all for differences of opinions, but it seems like one side gets to do whatever they want and the other side gets shut down. So when we come to ADUs, on Todd's point, we're supposed to have this robust, the favorite word of the past several years, robust ADU development program going on. And what are the numbers? I haven't seen them listed prominently anywhere. I haven't searched them out because I've been looking at budget issues and financial reports that are pretty hard to figure out as they're written. But what are they? I mean, I was hearing like, you know, oh, we're going to have 20 units when we actually had four. And why is that? I wonder if that had something to do with the rent control just cause eviction ordinances that you put through or three members have you put through. So when you talk about ADUs, what exactly are we talking about?
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for giving us back three minutes. I do appreciate it. Many towns have nine minutes, 10 minutes, thank you. As for the ADUs, I also think it's a very bad idea to require people to disclose how much they're paying rent because along with that will come their name. This will then be after a year, subject to public scrutiny because you're going to have to be in a position of saying, well, is it high? Is it low? Are they affordable units, are they not? So you're going to expose our community, possibly our community that would not like to be exposed to what they're paying rent, what they can afford. And we brought this up when you were trying to bring forth and push through the just cause rent control. And I had assumed with the parallels of World War II that this would never be done again. But I see a failure here. For all the ADUs, there's pros and cons, but I think the fire department should be a part of this conversation. At the last month's meeting, for the 243 units at School Street Plaza, you talked about VMT, vehicle miles traveled. Before COVID, Marin County had an average of 11.7 car trips per day, per unit across the county. 243 units, if we come down to 10 units per day, per unit, makes another 2,400 car trips per day. Yet your consultant said, whoa, woo-hoo, by putting it here, we're going to reduce the pre-existing traffic count by 15%. False. I think these ADUs should also be put into a cumulative or accumulative database and saying, where will these impacts be? How can we look at all this additional traffic? Are there ways and means to mitigate this? Has the fire department weighed in for evacuation routes? This has not been included and I think the fire department is coming to a point we need to do this. If, for instance, your one council member, Kohler, succeeds on putting 10 workforce houses up on Forest Avenue, that will be a fire hazard, a danger and possibly cost lives if there's a fire. So I wish you would include the fire department on these discussions. It's pertinent, thank you.
Thank you, next please.
Valerie Gudheim, Fairfax. I want to agree with the last two speakers, at least, and three. We, we had, before COVID, we had looked at and picked out all the plots that could be built with houses and ADUs. Nothing was done, which now lets us have to be having higher six, six, whatever, buildings, six-floor buildings or whatever it is. But we, we spent a lot of time looking and the, and the council spent a lot of time looking at all the individual places that, that could be built for individual housing. Now, nobody moved on that and that housing could include ADUs. So now we're left with corporate people coming in who have no idea what this town is about and are going to just wreck it the way basically the, all the, the wrecking has, has gone on with people you, you hire. You should, you guys are, you're on the council, you can make your own decisions and I really want to urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Kay, followed by Sierra. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, good evening, Town Council. I have, I don't know what happened, Jeff, but you, we didn't have sound through half of your, at least I didn't have sound through half of this presentation. So I apologize if you explain this. And then I did try to call in on Zoom and the number that is for the packet is not a valid Zoom number, just FYI, tried a couple of times. But Jeff, I did see your slide and it did say, I think it said something about there is no more size requirements. And I kind of want clarification since I couldn't hear that, if that was correct or not, because in your exhibit, you know, on the new thing, there are still like, you know, no more than 500 feet for a JADU and I forget 1,200 feet for an ADU. So I'm left confused because I couldn't hear the presentation. Also, I would also like some clarification because a year ago, when we discussed the housing element, I remember Jeff saying there was different criteria for, like I thought it had to be actually completed before we can use those numbers for the housing element for ADUs. And I know we reported that there were 14 permits. Is that, are those, that 14 number for permits, is that the number we can use for the housing element for our ADU requirement?
Thank you, and we'll be taking up questions once we get back to deliberations, thank you.
The next speaker is Sierra. Sierra, you are unmuted.
There we go. I saw that, or heard that we can have up to 10 ADUs on a property. Are there any size constraints for, you know, what size the lot is to have 10 ADUs? I mean, in some pieces of property that might work, depending on the slope and everything else. My other question is, in terms of ADUs, does the owner have to live on the property to have an ADU built? For example, could I buy a lot and put 10 ADUs on it beside the main house and not live there? Or would I have to live there in one of the ADUs or in the main house? And the other thing I would like to know is how would, there's a lot of units up in the hills that have been there for 30, 40, 50, I don't know how many years. And if those all get brought in, how is that going to impact the town's numbers for what, you know, we're liable for from whatever the regime is, you know, demanding that we build all this affordable housing? And I also really question and wonder what the definition of affordable is because I hear, you know, for a lovely big block building that may as well be a Borg spaceship for School Street, that, you know, there's so many affordable housing units in it. But what is affordable? Is affordable making under, or under $120,000 a year? It's like, none of the people that I know that have been here forever make anywhere near that. So I guess we're all just living in poverty or something. But, and then, you know, to the other point about school teachers and paying school teachers enough to live where they live or other employees, hmm, problematic. Anyway, I'd like to know what the numbers are for what's going to happen if people legalize everything up in the hills and how that changes our numbers that were demanded and what room that gives us to resist the buildout of the town, the ugly Borg spaceships. And that's it, you know, thank you very much, good luck and God help us.
Thank you. And is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, so I am going to close the public hearing and we're going to go back to deliberation. I wanted to just quickly run through the questions from members of the public. We had one question about ADU production. I was under the impression, I think it was at the last meeting, that we actually approved our annual progress report to HCD and that those numbers were in there. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And there's been, during the entire RENA cycle, which we've had, I think one of the speakers mentioned it, even 14 ADUs have been finalized total. So it is a little less than we anticipated.
Okay, great.
But that's a new RENA cycle, starting in 2023.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think that another person was questioning about whether there was no more size requirement for ADUs. I think she missed part of it. What, what is that?
Yeah, there's no size requirement for ADUs that are a conversion of existing space. So to explain that a little bit more, so if you have an existing house that's 1,000 square feet and you wanted to convert part of that house into an ADU, then there wouldn't be a limit on how big the ADU space could be in comparison to the house space.
But there would be a limit on a new construction, separate?
Correct, if it's a separate new construction, there would be. The limits would still apply.
Okay, and then the final question that I wanted to address was, I think Sierra was asking about whether the owner needed to live on the property with the ADUs, especially if it was like a multifamily with multiple ADUs. I think there was a little confusion about how many ADUs you could have on your property if it was a multifamily property versus a single-family property. I don't think it was 10, but I could have missed it.
Yeah, it's different. I think he may have been thinking about the multifamily and that is where there's, you can have up to eight, but you can't have more multifamily units than already exist on the property. So as I explained, if you have a fourplex, you can't have more than four new ADU units and they still would have to fit within the setbacks and that sort of thing. And then, what was his other question?
Does the owner have to live on the property?
Oh, if it's a, if it's a JADU, yes, the owner has to live on the property. If it's an ADU, then no.
Great, thank you. I'm now going to move on to council member deliberations. I just wanted to clear up questions from the public.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay, Mr. Egger would like to?
I've just got a bunch of notes. So, so on the issue of, of how many ADUs you could have in a lot, is it a maximum of eight or do you get one ADU equal to one unit on that parcel?
Yeah, I think it's the latter for a multifamily property. If you, like, say if you had a multifamily zone property and you had a fourplex, then you could have another four, up to four units.
If you have, if you have 20 units on your?
If you have 20 units, then you could have eight.
You can't have 20?
Well, if you have 20 existing units?
Yes.
Then you could have up to eight additional.
Well, that's a match. You don't get one unit for each, each housing unit that's on, that's.
So there's a cap at eight?
Up to eight, okay. So basically, the state is redefining our zoning ordinance for us. What's interesting, it allows a 1,200 square foot ADU. Our home was 900 square feet when we purchased it in 1962. It's going up a little bit now, it's probably about 1,200 now. But a 1,200 square foot ADU is a pretty large ADU. It's a, is that the state doesn't say that's it? They could go to 1,200 square feet?
Correct, correct, for a two-bedroom.
Isn't a one-bedroom 850?
One-bedroom is 850 and two-bedroom is 1,200, yeah.
We currently have creek setbacks. The reason is creek setbacks is because of the, of the issues with, with erosion, et cetera. But this says a setback should be four feet. Our creek setback is 20 feet. What happens in the creek setback?
Yeah, the creek setbacks still apply. They'd have to meet the switch, yeah.
Fairfax has had a ban on septic tanks since the later 70s. It's never been lifted. And of course, this talks about a septic system and getting permits from the county of Marin. So if there's a ban on septic tanks, can the state mandate ADUs be hooked up to a septic tank?
So I just want to add, as the Chair of Marin LAFCO, there are areas in Fairfax that are not close at all to the sanitary district. So there are areas, and I think they're far out in the Cascades, where they have to be on septic, regardless of our ban. I don't know if that's helpful.
Yeah, I would have to look into that. I'm not totally confident in the rules. I know that if you have an existing access to a sewer, you have to connect to it.
So they can override, the state could override that ban on septic systems. See, but the reason Canyon Road is now on sewer is because folks out there wanted to build it, add an ADU. And so they paid to run the sewer system out Canyon Road. That's what happened. Cascade Drive did not do that. So there's a lot of parcels like Cascade Drive that are on septic. So this ordinance, do we have an estimate of how many second units could be added? And number one, number two, in the Wooey Zone, while an urban interface zone, there's no limit on, on second units, on ADUs and that can be built, is that correct?
Correct, it's the rules.
Even though we don't, do not have a safety, a legal safety element, that's, that's not a problem for the state of California, is it?
Yeah, I know that basically all parcels in town could have an ADU.
Are there additional questions you're looking for? Mr. Egger, do you have additional questions?
No, no.
Okay, so, okay. And then Mr. Gergely?
Yes. So it's in quite a dilemma here. The, so state has mandated a lot of new units be put into Fairfax into most towns and cities. They say there's a housing shortage. There's a lot of questions about that housing shortage. One of the, the main politicians behind telling everybody in our town how to, how to run it has 50,000 to 60,000 empty livable units in his area, which is San Francisco, by the way. And yet, even though San Francisco, where his district is, is empty with 50,000 to 60,000 units, they want to pile on all these units here. So now we have seven-story buildings. And by the way, no one likes the Wild West more than I do, so I'll, I'll start there. But you have seven-story buildings going up, you've got ADUs going pretty much wherever I guess they can possibly go, kind of a nice advantage to a homeowner. But there's no parking required. There's a safety issue in all these situations. There's a traffic issue. I just don't understand what the state's doing. It makes no sense. I'm all for freeing up as many rules as possible, believe me. For you, many people know that I would be for, against more bureaucracy, okay? And red tape. And, but this is like some sort of Wild West-type situation that. And, but this is like some sort of Wild West type situation that makes absolutely no sense. I'm not sure what it's about. I think that you can literally overbuild, number one, overbuild and have a, a place that's not safe for fire or other types of services. And I don't think, I think that it could, check this scenario out. You, you have so many units in place, seven story buildings and all that, that, and by the way, it doesn't bother me, I'm not going anywhere, but real estate collapses, the town depends on, on the tax, the property taxes. If just 20% of the revenues go down in the, in the, in the town, this, there's no town to run, there's no money to run the town. So they collapse the real estate market, which is happening in some places, by the way. That could happen. Now, all I'm saying is that this is a crazy thing in front of me. I'm not sure what, if anyone's had time to absorb really what's going on here, but it just seems completely out of control. There's no control by our town. We have no local control. I like easing up on controls, but this may have gone too far. The state is once again, I think, overstepping their boundaries in my estimation. That's what I have to say about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, well, I just want to clarify that appreciate what Councilmember Gary Gelli said, that if we don't pass this, the state rule prevails. So we're even more in a bind. What I would like, which is a simple request, is that for the amnesty program, that we change the date to 2035, January 1st, 2035. But I will make even a bigger request. Why don't we make it 2045? You know, we want people to bring these units in from the cold. There are health and safety issues with some of them, most likely. And for those that we can get them up to building code in five years, that's great. I think I'm concerned about people's safety and I know people built without permits with good intentions in a lot of cases, but, so I would like to say that the, continue the incentive program through January 1st, 2045. Let's just, so we don't always have to keep doing this. And I like what we're doing with the 50% fees for either legalizing or not legalizing. You know, we don't get every, all our costs, but I think we're encouraging people to build ADUs and JADUs. So that's what I'd like. And that's my few requests and understanding the concerns that have been expressed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hellman, did you have comments?
Yeah, I would agree with what Councilmember Kohler said. And yeah, I mean, Mike, this has been going on for a long time and the state has passed probably 60 laws in the last 10 years, housing laws, and they're all.
And there's more coming this year.
There's more coming and they're all reducing significantly, severely limiting our local control. So like what Councilmember Kohler said, whether we do anything or not, whether we like it or not, the state law is going to prevail. So what we do have is some room, as you described, right? With objective standards and so forth. So I want to get back to the data because I am sensitive to some of the concerns related to that, the rent, rental data. Can you, when you ask for it, can you make it anonymous in terms of the reply back?
Uh, yeah, I don't think there's any requirement that we, that we have to report who says what. We could make it anonymous.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're going to take a vote on this a minute, probably. I just wanted to mention though, that in the leading, so then I've had my questions answered. I feel like we've answered the public's questions. In the leading up to this, we did receive an email from an organization, which is a legal organization, pointing out that they felt like the size limitations that we had weren't up to state law. And I just wanted to remind all of us that lawsuits from the state are not the only risk or liability that we face as a community when we do not follow state housing laws. There have been a number of very large third party suits from legal organizations. I think Pleasanton ended up spending $2 million and Huntington Beach spent $3.5 million. That's not on their legal fees with the state. That's what their legal fees with nonprofit organizations suing them. So, you know, we, we have to be really mindful of that. There are a number of, I felt like this letter was like a little bit of warning. There are a number of nonprofit legal organizations watching and waiting for jurisdictions that don't comply so they can take them to court. So I just think we need to be mindful that we can face a number of liabilities, not just from the state itself, but from nonprofit organizations that are waiting in the wings to, you know, take a jurisdiction to court about these things. So, you know, I, I am concerned about us making sure that we comply with these laws and that we also do it in a way where we can have, retain whatever amount of local control we have. And it seems like we have had a couple of suggestions of what those are. And one of those was, you know, some of the color and, you know, look of the units for newer, for new ADUs and also the dark sky requirements, I believe. So if those are legit, you know, those are, are part of our ability to retain some local control if we pass this. If we do not pass it, then the state will, the state version will prevail and we won't be able to have those things, I think.
Ready to make a motion, but I want to ask a question regarding what Council or Vice Mayor Hellman said. Under the rent reporting section, which is number nine of something, it talks about the owner and it talks about enforceability. So, you know, if anything comes into us, it's a public record. So how can it be anonymous? I, I guess, I know you said that you could do that, but I don't think we can.
Well, the mechanism is, if it's an electronic survey, I mean, there's lots of mechanisms to do that when the data comes back, it's.
I wonder if we could just hard write, hard code it into the, into here, we could just add a sentence that the.
Well, why don't you read the sentence? That's all. I was just trying to be responsive to how we do that. So where would you do it under rent reporting? Where would you write this?
You could, you could just add a C on here. That's the, you could say, you could either say that the owner may request that it be anonymous, or you could just say that the data will be anonymous.
Okay, so why don't we just say, just say the data will be anonymous?
Okay.
Rather than having somebody have to request?
Yeah, because it, it doesn't help our reporting to, to know the specific address. We would just like to have them. It might make people more willing to give the information if they know that it's anonymous.
Okay, so I want to go ahead and make a motion and that is that we waive first reading, read by title only and ordinance to amend chapter 17.048 residential accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units of the municipal code to comply with recent changes in state law with the following amendments. The amendment in the supplement, which is number four, under deapprovals, to make a change to the ADU permit C, to make the program incentive program expire on January 1st, 2045. And to add C to number nine rent reporting that would say the data will be anonymous.
I'll second.
Ask a question again, couple of questions.
Okay, I think we're at motion, but okay.
Unless you want to call the question?
Yeah, we haven't talked about requiring sewer hookups and water hookups for ADUs. Does Fairfax require an ADU to have a sewer lateral and be hooked into the Ross County sanitary district sewer and get a water permit from the MMWD? Or what are we doing?
Yes, yeah, those are standard building code requirements that we would require.
They would, okay. And then the other question is, if we leak, we've got about 300 undocumented second units around town. If we start, if we, if we can legalize a lot of them, can those new, those legalized former undocumented units be counted towards our arena numbers?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I made the motion.
So we have a motion.
Second.
So I guess we'll do the vote. Councilmember Edgar?
This is a motion to waive for the reading and introduce?
Yes, with the changes I mentioned.
The changes. Councilmember Gary Gelli?
The new state laws are putting our town in danger. They're putting our citizens in danger. These need to be more thoughtful and considered. I'm all for doing things to help housing, but this is just the wrong approach. And so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
Mayor Blash?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We are now moving into regular agenda items and we are going to be talking about introduce and read by title only an ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in local responsibility areas and adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing on May 7th, 2025. So I think we're moving into the staff report now.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce our executive fire staff here today. Chief Mahoney and also Rob Bastian, who is the senior fire inspector. Is that correct? And so they are experts in this area and have a slideshow for us today.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing us to come and do a presentation for the fire hazards severity zones. And like Manager Abrams mentioned, we have a slideshow to hopefully articulate a little bit more of what the staff report stated. And I'll turn it over to Senior Fire Inspector Rob Bastian.
Thank you, Chief. The fire hazard severity zones, the following presentation is going to cover the California Government Code requirements. It's going to cover state and local map history, how the fire hazard severity zones are determined, and how does this affect our town of Fairfax? Next slide. So the California Government Code requires section 51179A mandates that local agencies shall designate by ordinance moderate, high and very high fire severity zones in their jurisdiction within 120 days of receiving the recommendations from the state fire marshal pursuant to section 51178. We received these maps on February 24th, 2025, so we are definitely within that 120 day period. And I'd like to point out that all required, all agencies Marin County and throughout the state that have the local responsibility areas are in the same process as we are right now. State and local map history. After the devastating Oakland Hills fire, CAL FIRE was mandated to publish maps that included very high fire severity zones only. In 2020, CAL FIRE was then regulated with, or mandated with creating maps that created the very high fire severity zones in addition to high zones and moderate zones. 2007 Fairfax adopted the Wildland Urban Interface Zone, which was based on the recommended maps at the time from the state. And we were using local expertise and knowledge to create those maps at that time. These are the two maps side by side. The one on the right is the new fire hazard severity zone. And the one on the left is the Wooey map. You can see that the area in gray, in the middle of the green is the area that's not in the Wildland Urban Interface. And that area is now in the high fire zone along the Sir Francis Drake corridor. And the area on the right hand side of the fair, high fire severity zone. Yeah, if you can go to the next slide real quick. In the Taylor, the Roca area is no longer in the fire hazard severity areas. The new maps, of course, cover more areas than the Wooey maps do. You can, the next slide.
Can you go back? Because you're going really fast.
Okay.
Can you, yeah, so I looked at the maps online and I live on Sir Francis Drake and Canyon Village and I didn't see that they were in the high fire severity zone. You're saying all along Sir Francis Drake?
But if you, I mean, we can't zoom in on this map here, but the majority of Sir Francis Drake, we can see Sir Francis, this is Sir Francis Drake here on this, on the Wooey map, which lines here through, down to Klaus in the Roca area here where the gas station is up on the hill there. So this area right here is the new areas of the high fire zones and the yellow areas are the moderate zone. Does that help? Does that help explain?
Well, it looks different than what I saw online because it looks like Canyon Village is in the high fire severity zone. But of course, I may not be, Canyon Village is farther out, but that's all right.
So it looks like part of it maybe. And again, we can't zoom in on the maps here, but we, you have a copy of the maps that was part of the attachments where you can.
Yeah, well, you can't really tell by those. I looked online, but okay, that's all right.
So could you explain in layman's term, what happened to the Roca area that's now white on the new map? What, what happened there?
Would, as we go through the slides, it'll explain a little bit of detail.
Okay.
On the flame length modeling and other stuff and how they became up, came up with the maps.
Okay.
One more.
That slide, you went through it really fast. Can you go back one slide only? So you're saying Taylor and Roca are no longer in any zone, including moderate?
So two different things. You have the fire hazard severity zone maps and you have the local Wildland Urban Interface map. Both maps will apply. So the new fire hazard severity zone maps expanded beyond the, the very high fire severity zones, which town of Fairfax does not have any of those areas.
Right.
And now includes moderate and high severity zones.
Okay, but on your second bullet says the new fire hazard severity zone maps exclude the Taylor and Roca area where the Wooey, so are you saying Taylor and Roca are not even moderate?
They are not.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're undesignated.
That's interesting. Okay, go ahead.
But they are in the wild, or majority of that area is in the Wildland Urban Interface area. So it, all the rules and regulations for construction and vegetation would still apply to those areas. It's just not recognized with the modeling of the state.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
So CAL FIRE used the best available science and data to develop and field test a model that served as the basis of the zone assignments. The model evaluated the probability of the area burning and potential for fire behavior in that area. There are multiple determining factors that designated fire hazard severity zone, including fire history. So these, the burn patterns and burn areas that were up to 2020 were included in the modeling. Vegetation and fuel levels, which includes the intensity and heat produced by available type of vegetation in the areas. Predicted flame length, blowing embers. As you all know, what the ember is, it'll cast and carry on for hundreds and hundreds of yards, if not half or up to miles if possible, depending on the, the wind speed at that time. And localized fire weather, wind patterns and local weather patterns, of course, and terrain, the lay of the land, the hills, the valleys and the canyons. Okay, next one. Those combined factors have a scoring matrix which determines you're very high, you're high and you're moderate. Each one of the zones have a 40 to 60% increase before they hit the next level of intensity in the rating cycle. Go to the next one now. So Fairfax, as you can see, only has moderate and high areas. Moderate zones are forests, Miura and parts of the Cascade. You can see everything in yellow. And then everything in the bright orange is the scenic Tamalpais, basically the, the west side of town. Go to the next one. Here's a little comparison between our neighboring counties in the Bay Area. You can see all of Marin County here. We're just left of the Santa Fe area. A lot of the area north of us is all the high fire zone and you can only see a little bit of the very high fire areas there.
Rob, can I just ask you, go back to that slide.
Sure.
So it's my understanding that the very high fire severity zones are in, there's a few in Nevada and a few in Mill Valley. And we also know the state responsibility areas, which I know you aren't covering on this map. But what color? I mean, what it looks like to me, the red.
Bright red is the very high fire.
But that's not Nevada. So are these maps right?
These are the maps that are on the state fire marshal website?
I mean, I remember at Marin wildfire when Chief Weber came with Stephen Torrance. They talked about Nevada, parts of Mill Valley. And this also looks like Tiburon or Belvedere?
It's, Angel Island is.
Angel Island?
Is part of it, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, it's just sort of interesting that we're not seeing what I remember hearing, but I'm not arguing with you. I'm just sort of questioning. So, okay.
And on the, on the last slide, there'll be a, an area to get to the actual.
Okay.
Maps for everybody to look at. You can go to the next slide if you don't mind. What do these maps mean to Fairfax? So back in 2007 with the adoption of the WUI maps, Fairfax, or Fairfax took the proactive approach in adopting fire safe regulations and building construction regulations. The new fire hazards of various own maps include additional areas previously not identified on the WUI maps, which now require the. If you go to the next slide. Building standards for new construction in the fire area, which includes remote or additions. Defensible space requirements in broader areas of the town. Vegetation management plans, which are part of the construction for new construction and substantial remodels in those areas. And the natural hazard real estate closures for the high fire severity zones. We have to report to the state on those as well. We already do resale inspections throughout the entire town, so there's nothing new or impacts to the departments or to town. Here's a question that came up a lot. And this is from the, a quote from the insurance commissioner, Richard Laura. CAL FIRE's maps are intended to drive local planning decisions, not insurance decisions. Under Commissioner Laura's new regulation finalized in October of 2022, insurance companies must provide discounts for wildfire safety actions, such as community mitigation and home hardening, which CAL FIRE's maps do not assess. In addition, insurance companies are already using risk analysis tools and models that go beyond CAL FIRE's proposed maps in determining what properties they will underwrite. So help us help you. Defensible space in Zone Zero is stuff we can work on, home hardening and evacuation ready. It is time for you to adapt to living in a wildfire environment. And we encourage everybody to go to firesafemarin.org to learn more about everything.
And so Zone Zero is within five feet of your house.
That's the fight, the, yeah, the house out of approach to five feet is your most intense area for.
And isn't the state doing regulations to require Zone Zero?
They are in the process of writing those regulations and getting them through the process, correct.
Okay.
And does that apply to moderate, high, and very high, or?
As of right now, the regulations have not been publicized, so I don't have that answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Because we have so many small lots in town. I'm just wondering how many of them will be vegetationless. But we'll find out. Okay, other questions from council members? Vice Mayor Hellman.
Do you know, at this point in time, how many Marin jurisdictions have adopted the maps?
Since everybody got the same maps in our, our phase two in February 24, we are all in the process of, of doing our first readings this month or next month.
Okay, so do you know, so it's, so none then? Are we really the first, or?
Yeah, the, the process has been ongoing for the last couple of weeks, I think. Today is our first meeting here in Fairfax. Tomorrow, we have a presentation in Ross. And then next, or early next week, we have one in San Anselmo. So I don't believe that anybody has formally adopted them yet, just because of the process it takes. So, but everybody is in the process. I believe Kent Field had their first reading a couple of weeks ago, too.
Okay, thank you. If I, if I may, through the mayor. So just a reminder for everyone here, this is a two-part process. So there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay, so public hearing means more input from the community. Okay, great.
Question here.
So, yeah, Mr. Edgar?
So I'm looking at the 2007 map. All the cascades was in a high hazard area, the cascades, 2007.
The 2007 was the wildland urban interface. And moderate and high zones were not included in those maps.
Oh, I was just looking at this map, the figure S, S5, that one. That, that, it shows the cascades in a high fire. And now it's in, the cascades are, is in moderate. Upper cascade is probably high, but the moderate. Did, did, did we do that, that part of the mapping? Or did CAL FIRE do the, the cascade area inside the town limits to determine the rating?
The new fire hazards of areas on maps?
Yes.
Everything was done by CAL FIRE.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
In the 2007 Wildland Urban Interface maps, that was done by the town based on the draft maps that CAL FIRE put out at that time.
Okay, so it was interesting because we've lost our fire insurance twice already in the cascades. But now I see we're in a moderate area, so I can go to the insurance company and tell them, no, no, we're in a moderate area.
Yeah, and you saw from what the commissioner said in that slide that they're supposed to be incentivizing people for doing the work based on the area. So that's, that's good. Hopefully you do your defensible space and, and other stuff throughout the town.
So, so when we're talking about defensible space five feet, so for instance, we have rose bushes around the house. Should they all come out?
At this time, it would be a recommendation and not a requirement until it comes out in, in code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garen Kelly?
First of all, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate the information. And I hope this apply, I think this applies because I had some property up at Santa Rosa that was one block away from burning down. Luckily, it avoided that. But what impacts do you, would, or is, has it been taken into consideration, the state mandates on all these extra building units from seven-story buildings to additional ADUs, all that type of stuff? Was that a factor in any part of the assessment?
According to the CAL FIRE website, they worked with the builders in the industry. And they came, they consensus that these are, you can build within those areas, but you have to build them with the construction of ignition-resistant materials and WUI compliant products. So it can, it can be done. And they, they did take it into account.
And, and as far.
When they were developing these maps with the building industry.
As far as the escape routes and the streets and people having to leave their house and get in on the road. I know, once again, up in Santa Rosa, it was gridlock. Nobody can drive from here to that window there without having to. Took it four hours to get from here to there. How's that affect? Is taking into account the increase in the housing the state's asking for? Does that, does that affect any information we have here today?
So these maps were not taking any of that into consideration. It was just the probability of flame length and ember spread into the towns based from the wildland into the town, into the areas. So it did not take any of the urban areas into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions from the council? Okay, so let's move to public comment. And we're going back to two minutes per person. And so if the first person who'd like to speak in the room could come forward, I see it's Sierra. Go ahead.
I think I just have one comment. And that is, I feel so, so much better and safer knowing that our town is only in a moderate fire danger and not higher fire danger anymore. I feel so much better about that, that, you know, I just do.
Okay, next, please.
Hi, Rick Hamer, Fairfax. I'm very uncomfortable disagreeing with Sierra because the way I'm reading this map is places downtown and along the evacuation corridor and along the prime real estate to stack housing above retail spaces along Sir Francis Drake, where our U.A. overlay is, are now no longer, I mean, they weren't in the, in the WUI. Now they are in either high or moderate fire dangers. That's where most of the housing, including the School Street Plaza project, is going to go, including Dominga Avenue. These are places where there's already a lot of people. And now the, the whole route, instead of being a gray strip of safety to get us out of here, are now considered highly flammable. So this needs to be addressed in our planning and our fire codes. So the WUI standards that we would have to set only for the outlying roads, the outlying structures, neighborhoods, now have to apply to everything, including multiple-story buildings, which is what we're going to have here. And now is the time, since this, this material is available and we've been waiting for it, now is the time to jump on this. And, and I mean, I would leverage this information to HCD to say, you really have to do something about these Rena targets when you have high fire danger everywhere that we would be building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My first comment, I'd like to thank Rick Hamer. I think he made a wonderful presentation. I hope you guys heard. Looking at the maps, I noticed that my property was put in at moderate fire danger, when in fact, with all my defensible space around it, flat and all those things, I do think it should be excluded from that zone and put back into the least fire like the downtown. Two, when the flood district came in and originally looked at the property, works me the town, they put me in as flood district. And when I complained and they pulled up the LIDAR, they agreed that I was at the 500-year flood plain. So again, my property that I've offered to Dan, should you reincorporate a bridge at the end of Pacheco, this could save people. When there's a fire, everybody wants to get out. And when everybody races to get out, the equipment can't get in. If you had a means to direct all the traffic, for instance, on my property over Pacheco, you could put everybody in this town and their car on my property and slowly feed them down Center Boulevard by the control of the fire department, which means we'd get all our equipment in here. So you have an opportunity to save everybody in this town. And that's one suggestion that I've made for now probably 20 years. Additionally, the higher your fire risk designations, the fewer houses that are going to be insured for fire insurance. So we want to really work together and reduce your ordinances that don't allow people to clear around their property with gas-powered equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax, almost. Yeah, it seems to me that the people who really need to hear this presentation the most are the legislation, are the legislators, the legislators of the state legislative, legislation. Because they sure don't seem to take into account our ability to evacuate. I don't know if you saw what happened this afternoon. A traffic light went out. I think there was maybe a fender bender. Everything was blocked. Everything was blocked. People were blocked from like the Bank of America stop and go to the, at least a stop sign at the Good Earth. Bellinas was backed up. Drake was backed up. You're not getting out until there's some reality of what's going on in Sacramento, until these departments and these people who are supposed to be governing for our benefit and our lives get together and figure out that Scott Wiener and his backers are going to kill lots of people. That's what's going to happen. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a town to start looking at ways, contacting our state legislators, going to boards, looking at what else we can do to stop the insanity that's coming out of Sacramento. Because it's not just towns and buildings and the, you know, the faulty data that they use to even come up at these numbers. We have a right to live.
Thank you. Next, please.
Are we allowed to ask some questions? Because I have, I'm just curious. I've studied urban planning a little bit and I just have some questions.
So you can ask questions. We can't answer them right now, but I can hold on to them and ask, and ask them after you're done.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, after the public comment is done.
Wonderful, okay. So what I'm curious about is, you know, I've studied sustainability at school, masters. And, you know, when you have green zones, it actually cools the earth where there are plants. And now, and I'm not questioning the wisdom here. I'm trying to reconcile it from my own education. So please don't think there's any judgment here. I'm truly curious. And then we have these, you know, where we have to have certain perimeters around homes be cleared of vegetation. And then that drives up the heat. So I'm wondering about, and I had an issue with growing long grasses. I had a neighbor who was concerned about it, but they were green. So I called up the fire department because I like to, you know, tell me what your problems are. Let's work it out. And, and so I called with the fire department. They said, you know, it's fine if the grasses stay green. And sure enough, you know, the yard was cooler during the summer months and it required much less watering because everything was shaded by the verger of the yard. So to me, what's happening is, is we're clearing, like I just saw him whacking stuff down on Center this morning. We're clearing away what could be considered, you know, helping the, the fires by not maybe watering a little bit more. I mean, I know we have water issues. I've studied that, too. But I'm just curious about the balancing effect, right? Like, how much do we clear and long-term, how is that going to affect the earth with the heat versus maybe looking toward more green spaces to augment ameliorating what we've got going on? Does that make sense? Am I being clear? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. I'm wondering, as members sitting on various fire boards, whether Ms. Kohler, Councilwoman Kohler, or Councilwoman Hellman have actually looked at and understand the model being used? And if they could explain it to the public, or if maybe one of the fire people here could explain or provide a copy of the model being used to determine these maps, which despite some illusion that maybe insurance companies are using other things, will likely result in the increase or denial of fire insurance to, it looks like, about a third to a half of Fairfax homes that are now going to be reclassified. I don't know if any of you know, people who have lost their fire insurance can't finance their properties anymore, can't sell their properties, have had their properties devalued, no longer have the insurance coverage that they used to have, have maybe a fifth of the insurance coverage at three or four times the price. I would ask you, as responsible council members, to get a copy of how this is being calculated and ask CAL FIRE to confer with local people here in Fairfax and do mapping to reassess what truly belongs in these maps. And the reason I'm stating that, A, I haven't seen any presentation of the formulas being used. B, in the agenda item, it states, and I'll sign off because I know you're going to cut me off, but.
Finish your sentence and that would be great.
It appears that the encampment here is the source of. It appears that the encampment here is the source of potential fire hazard, and that may be influencing these maps, which would indicate the fire could spread from there. We've had arson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Either I didn't hear correctly, or I don't think that a fire that's going to be moderate is going to stay moderate. I think we have a lot of wooden buildings here, wooden houses here, a lot of trees, a lot of things that can burn. And once it starts, it's going to keep going. So I, I don't see how this is going to stay moderate and how it's going to stay contained. What, what do you, what?
I just don't think you're understanding what the map is, sorry.
I just want to get through the public comment and then I want to answer her question so we can ask the, the presenter.
And the other, the other thing that's really, whether there's a moderate or not moderate thing, there's no egress. We have two major branches that go, that go into two other, only two other ways of getting out, unless you go towards Petaluma. And I just don't think that this is safe for anybody to be living here, losing fire insurance and be able to get out. We, I mean, it's already backed up from the middle of town when, during rush hour, to the Good Earth. It's just not, it's not, I don't see how this can work well to save people. And there, there are going to be a lot of people stuck in cars or burning or whatever, and I don't want to see that.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
Were you going to answer?
Are you done or not done?
No, I am, but you said you were going to address something.
I'm going to, I'm going to take all the questions and then when we're done with public comment, I'm going to sort of feed them back to you.
Okay.
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Kay, followed by Richard. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, I just want to say thank you, Rick Hamer. I hope you guys got my email. I won't repeat it about Perry Park is now, well, I'll repeat it really quick, but not all of it. Perry Park is now high fire danger. I asked for you guys to please make that no open flame. I think you need to take the barbecue out. I think you need to stop with the camp stoves. I know I've said this for two years. Others did not hear Jeff also and cannot call into Zoom, so it wasn't user area, user error. I heard from Marin Pacific Insurance today, and they are canceling nationwide. All insurance in California is getting, they're not renewing anything. So I'm losing my insurance, and I am now high fire danger, so I don't know if I'll find anything. And then I guess my, I have a question. I am less than five feet from my neighbor. I think a lot of us are kind of grandfathered in these funky lots and stuff. Is there anything, this is for Cal Fire, hi Dan, is there anything I can do for my neighbor to clear their property? I'm good with mine, but they're not. Is there, do I have any recourse? Thank you.
Thank you, next.
The next speaker is Richard. Richard, you are unmuted.
Good evening, Council. I also just have a few questions that I'd like to pass along to you that you can then pass along, because I saw on one of the slides in the presentation, it looked like they were saying that insurance companies have their own modeling and their own way of analysis. I'd like just to have clarity on whether they are entitled to also look at any of these maps as well, and if there is a strong indication or likelihood that they, that the classifications that we get from these new maps or past maps or future maps have any bearing. I'm like one of the many in town who have had their homeowner's insurance canceled and struggled to get new insurance, and I've been assuming that since what happened in LA some months ago, that it's probably going to happen again. And I was doing my best to get my eyes to zone in. I'm up in the Toyon Oak Woodland Zone, and it looked like we might be creeping into the high, even though things around us were moderate. So I'm just, so I wanted to love to get further clarification on how insurance companies are using this data or not. The other question I have is, I know there's recommendations, fire teams have come out before and discussed house hardening and different things with me. I'm in a very peculiar location because I'm really deeply embedded into nature. I have a hillside behind me with hundreds of trees. I have another house that shares my easement behind me that are people that have been living there since 1965, and they have five cars, and it's like an absolute fire threat. I have no control over what they're doing, and I would, it'd be impossible for me to get five feet or 30 feet or 100 feet of any kind of clearance. And so it's very complicated, and so my question is, are we heading to a future where we will be ultimately required to make various changes and have to be able to come up with the, the financial means to do that? So those are my questions to pass along. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay. So we're going to close public comment, and I'm just going to run through the questions that people asked, the first being, you know, how do we balance this issue with, you know, the clearing and the impact on heating the earth? And is it true that something that's green is going to be less flammable than something that's dry?
The moisture content of fuel load will definitely increase as it dries out. So the greener it is, the less likely it is to catch fire, depending on the material and the flammability of it.
Okay, but can I just interject? So Cypress is a torch, and it's really green. Juniper is pretty green, and it's a torch. So how does that, I mean, I just, I'm not sure that I feel like green necessarily says it's not going to burn.
Correct. The flammability possibilities of that individual plant, there's burn characteristics for each one with the fuel contents, the oils, some plants are more likely to ignite than others. But the ones she described in the comment was grasses, and typically when grasses are green or kept irrigated, well-irrigated, and they're usually not a threat.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I think there was just like an overall question of like, how are we going to start impacting the planet when we have to clear so much space around our homes and in the hills that, you know, there's no foliage left? And I know that's maybe a really broad question, but I'm not sure if that's being taken into account, that there's, when foliage is cleared and removed and we have more pavement, I think the surrounding area is hotter. I'm not sure if that's really a question we can answer here, but I think that was part of the concern.
Yeah, part of it is, is we're not clear-cutting and removing all vegetation. We're, we're doing it to make defensible space so we can keep it from igniting the structures.
Right, thank you. And I think, I mean, I heard a lot of concern from people, not only about fire erase, escape, but the issue about how much clearing we have to do and what, whether it will be necessary, and what happens if you, you clear the area around your house and you do all the home hardening, but your neighbor doesn't. So I'm just hearing a lot of concern there. So I think one of the questions that people had is, like, is there some point at which we're going to be required to make that clearance around our homes, like the zone zero type of thing? Or other, other changes?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So right now, state law, and local code already require defensible space for every property that's in a fire, has fire zone or the wooie areas. So those regulations are already in place. So they should be doing them as of now.
Right, so that doesn't matter whether it's moderate, high, or very high, they should, okay. So we already have in place, just to clarify what the one person was asking, laws that say that we are supposed to be making these changes, and there may be, I'm going to assume more in the future. Insurance companies, I think you answered this, they're not taking these maps into account, they're doing their own modeling?
Yeah, these are hazard maps and not risk maps, and they're basing their analysis on risk and not hazard.
Okay, and then, you know, what happens if somebody has done everything right with their property, but their neighbor's house is basically a fire trap? What can they do?
We have an online hazard complaint form that anybody can go on there if they think there's a hazard or know of a hazard, and they can report it and we'll follow up on it.
And what is the website?
RossValleyFire.org.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the final one is somebody wanted to know if they could get a model for how the maps are being created, and they wanted to know if the encampment in Perry Park was taken into account when they were creating these maps.
The urban areas were not taken into account, so Perry Park would have not been taken into account. The, what was the first part of the question again?
He also wanted to know if there was some way to get ahold of the methodology for the model, for, for these zones?
Actually, on the last slide, we have a QR code that takes you to the background and how Cal Fire came up with the maps. There's a good slide presentation in there and some, a lot of frequently asked questions, if you can put it back up.
Okay, and we could, also, that'll be in, online on, on our website, right? These presentations, we're going to put them on our website? Okay, great. So I'm going to move to council member comments, but I just want to make sure we get out of the way some of the public comments. Councilmember Hellman.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because a member of the public said, it sounded to me like she thought that there was, the, the moderate and high and very high, those are not the size of the fires. That's not what this, that's not what we're talking about. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Risk.
Yeah. Rob, you just, I just got confused when you said the urban areas were not considered in this new methodology or this new map, but the urban area, like the Sir Francis Drake we've been talking about, has been reclassified.
Just there, it did not take the housing into effect and create, it was the vegetation, the fuel, flame lengths. It did, it's not the urban conflagration that we're trying to avoid here, it's just a wild land fire.
I see. Okay, so I think what the one list speaker was alluding to is that we have had fires, campfires, we've had a case of arson. I think that's what's, what's being alluded to. So those incidents, because they, that is one of the things on the slides that they take into account, right? So you're saying those incidents didn't, weren't taken into account?
So they're taken into account fires over 200 acres.
Okay.
And 20 acres in urban areas.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And, and again, I'm going to reconfirm that we will have a public hearing next month where we'll have even more comment. Okay, so Councilmember Gereen Gelli.
Yes, just for, I don't know, the record or gather my thoughts, these are all connected, by the way, what I'm about to say, it's obvious. It's an eye-opener, as always. And it's, to me, it's just common sense. We're learning what we already knew, we already know from history of all these recent fires. It's obvious to me, my humble opinion, that the state of California, the politicians who are supposed to represent us, and in fact, Governor Newsom, do not care about the safety of the citizens of Fairfax. They should put a stop to the overbuilding of our small community and worry about the people that already live here. That's, that's what I want to.
Thank you.
That's the message I want to send.
Okay, so are there any other comments on this particular item, which we, you know, probably pretty much need to pass? Other comments or questions from council members?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I want to say thank you both for being here tonight and for presenting.
And thank you for the explanation. I think the slide in particular that talked about the different parameters was very helpful. So I'd like to make a motion to introduce and read by title only an ordinance to designate fire hazards, severity zones in local responsibility areas, and adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing on May 7th. Is that the correct date of the next council meeting? May 7th, 2025.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought it was May 2nd.
2nd.
Councilmember Agar.
Aye.
Councilmember Gereen Gelli.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes, and I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute bio break, and then we will be back here at about nine o'clock. And then we will move, sorry, to, we have two more items besides consent and whatnot on here, so got a lot to do. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. It's nine o'clock. I think we're losing a council member. All right, folks, it's nine...
Mike, we need you back here.
Okay, 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 I think this will work. So I am going to start the meeting now. We are moving on to item number three, which is, and if folks could kind of settle down so we can get going, this is going to be a late meeting. We're going to move on to the item, which would be to authorize the town manager to execute a professional services agreement. Hi, can we kind of take the conversation outside if you guys need to talk, because we're starting a meeting here? Thank you. So we're going to authorize the town manager to execute a professional services agreement with Bureau Veritas to provide the town of Fairfax with facilities, condition and needs assessment for town facilities in the amount of $36,312. So let's move on to the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to our planning director, Jeff Beiswinger.
I have a short presentation prepared, they'll kind of walk you through it. What we are recommending is that you, as you just mentioned, adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into the agreement for an amount not to exceed $36,312. And this was identified as a priority project when you did your goal setting for the 2425 fiscal year budget. So the purpose of the project would be to review all buildings and structures that are under town control at one time. This would be to ascertain the condition and maintenance needs, better anticipate the needs for maintenance and capital improvements, and then it's going to address immediate and then also future needs. So...
They don't look like they're doing the right thing. Have to be full screen.
I can see them moving on his screen, so we're having technical difficulties. Sorry about that.
Does Christine have them?
Okay, we're getting, we're getting there. This is good. Thank you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much.
I'll go back. So just to reiterate, just so it matches up what you're seeing on the screen, the purpose is to kind of review all the structures and buildings at one time, kind of ascertain the existing and future needs for the structures, kind of better anticipate the, the financial commitments essentially. This removes kind of the guesswork out of capital investment planning. It's a good idea to do these occasionally because it's a way to kind of spend money wisely, to know where the money's really needed to keep the facilities up to date, especially when it comes to expensive equipment like HVAC and plumbing. This is also important for, when you apply for grant money, such as FEMA grants, it's, you're more likely to get money awarded from other agencies if you kind of have a plan in place and you kind of know what you're asking for. So kind of, they like to give money to organized jurisdictions. The, as far as what the town, town currently has, as you all know, there's a town hall and police department, Fire Station 21, used by the Ross Valley Fire Districts. You have the community center, which is where the finance department is located, and it has a small meeting space. Then there's this building, the women's club, the pavilion, the corporation yard, offices and apparition, apparatus bays, and then there's some small buildings around the ballfield, a little league workroom, announcer's tower, and a restroom. In some cases, no significant improvements have been made since the original construction. So we issued a request for qualifications on September 9th. We did receive four submittals and interviewed two firms. Out of those two firms, we selected Bureau Veritas. It's a local firm that specializes in this exact thing, facilities assessments. They have experience in the Bay Area and Marin and have done projects in the surrounding counties and communities. They are proposing kind of a 20-year plan, and they have a reasonable cost estimate of $36,312, and they'd be able to get started pretty quickly. And it's a, like, three to six-month project.
Did you say three to six months?
Yeah, it's very short.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That was the question I was going to have, so I just want to check.
Yep. Anyway, I'm available for questions and comments.
Okay, so let's start with council member questions. Okay, so let's start with council member questions. Did you have something? I'm sorry. Okay.
I go if you want.
Mr. Egger would like to go, and then go to you.
So my concern is, is the hiring of consultants when we've got, well, I believe staff should be able to, to give us enough information here to make some decisions. You know, we've hired, the town has hired an architectural firm for the firehouse, and we've spent, what, $63,500 so far on preparing, looking at the firehouse to come up with plans and specs for a million and a half dollar remodel. We've got a building inspector, we've got, we have a vacancy now in the public works department, but I'm sure there's people in public works departments that can, that can look at our buildings, too. We have a town, contract town engineer. We know we're in a floodplain with our buildings.
So, yeah, okay, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, is your question, why, why can't we do this with staff?
So, you know, I'm, so I'm wondering, like, I'm looking at, at the assessment issue here. It shows the firehouse. So are we going to redo the firehouses? Are we going to have them look at the firehouse again? You know, I'm, I'm just concerned about, about, about hiring someone from the outside who's going to come in and look at our buildings, and I think we have the staff here available to do the kind of work.
So is there a reason why we can't have our staff do this? Why would we go with an outside agency? I think it's the.
I can start. Basically, this is a firm that specializes in this type of work, so they have the software, the modeling, the technical expertise. They can come in and be in and out and do the analysis. It would take staff. It would be much more expensive, I would, I would argue, for staff to do it, because we would not have the software, we would not have the expertise. We would pretty much have to train somebody in order to do this. They'd have to send them to a four or six-year college to have the required expertise. You would really want an architect to be involved, and also probably an engineer, and also a specialist in this particular field.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at what the report and what their approach entails, it does, I don't know that we have the expertise on staff to do this level of work. But backing up from, from that, I'd like to understand just the, why it is valuable for a jurisdiction to have something like this? Why is it important? And can you speak to any of our, we like to talk about our neighboring communities, so we don't look, so we can inform the public that we're not going rogue and doing something. This is very common. This is standard approach to managing assets, and these are assets, right?
Yes, I'll start, and then I want to turn it back over to Jeff. But, so, one thing that I want to add to the, the previous question is, we also have an issue of having full-time staff who are fully committed to the work that they need to do right now. So being able to bring in expertise who can do this quickly because they've done it many times before, and understand how to give us a report that's useful in, say, applying to FEMA, that's very valuable and not something that we would pay to keep on staff full-time. And then, secondly, to your question, Vice Mayor Hellman, it is very standard for jurisdictions to do facility assessment. It should be done every so often, because you want to be able to plan out your, your maintenance and also your financial future, right? So right now, Fairfax is in a situation where there hasn't been planning for repair and replacement of these buildings, and we frankly keep getting hit with emergencies that are very expensive. And when you have an emergency, then you just have to fix it. It costs more, and you can't get, you know, good bids. You, you don't have the time for that. So those are all context. And then I know that other Marin jurisdictions have gone through this pretty recently. So Ross is an example. They did a facility assessment. I don't have the cost on that, but I do have the cost on what they did next was a master plan for their campus of facilities. And that, for that, they paid about $160,000. So I was very pleasantly surprised to see this come in at about $36,000, because, you know, depending on the depth that you want to go into and the number of facilities that you have, you could easily spend more. And, you know, we did have four firms that applied. We narrowed that down to two. We, we interviewed those two, then decided, you know, which was the best in terms of being able to address the town's needs, then opened the cost envelopes and discovered that they were also very reasonable. So I feel very comfortable with this. And I would be concerned if we don't move forward, that we leave ourselves open to yet more disasters in the future.
But didn't you also say that, I mean, this is important to apply for grants?
Absolutely.
So if you don't have it, you're applying for grants without sort of a baseline, right?
And we've heard specifically from FEMA that their, their favorite projects, their most likely to be funded projects are shovel-ready. So everything has been done from planning, cost estimating, design, and, you know, it's ready to bid, or it's even been bid. What we're proposing here is that first stage, which is get the rough cost estimates. Without those, it's very difficult to even apply.
Okay, and then, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, are you saying that, I'm sorry if I, I missed it, but I, I thought it was an assessment, but, and that includes cost estimates of what it needs to get up to standard, up to, so you would, you would be able to say, the pavilion, for example, which the roof is leaking onto the artists during the crafts fair, saw it with my own eyes, you know, they'll say, they'll give an estimate, whatever, $2 million, whatever it is, and then that helps us get, apply for a grant.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
But if we don't do this, then we have very little to go on in terms of applying for a grant.
Can I just, so I watched a San Anselmo meeting recently, and I believe they just did a facilities assessment. Jeff, were you able to check with their public works director on that? Because I swear I saw that. Maybe I'm wrong.
I did ask that question, and they have not gotten back to me, but.
Okay, yeah. And then the other question I have is, you know, Councilmember Egger brought up the fire department, and I guess what I'm asking is, it would make sense to me to, if we move forward with this, and I like it that it's a three to six-month project versus, I couldn't tell from there, I think, because it was out of date, that we prioritize the fire department and do that assessment first. So as we move forward with the design, we make sure, not that we're going to spend $5 million, but we make sure that we integrate what we can in that design, so that we're not having to go back later. Is that, is that something that you would advocate for? Because to me, that makes sense. It's kind of like when we dig up a road, you know, and we want to make sure that we're coordinating with utilities. We don't want to have to go back. So does that make sense to you to have that kind of a milestone where we look at the fire department first, before we're breaking ground, to make sure that there isn't anything critical flaw that we're missing?
Well, I think the architects and the engineers involved in that project, they know what the codes are for that type of building, and, and that's like well underway. So I, we're not three to six months out. We're pretty close to having designs.
Well, it may be that, so a couple of things based on what Vice Mayor Hellman says is either, we don't include that building at all, because maybe we're already at that baseline plus. But if there needs to be something, that we do whatever it is pretty quickly to set. What do you think, Jeff?
Yeah, I think there'd be some good reason to do data sharing, for sure. And since it's already been evaluated by their architects, I think that would feed into this particular program.
Okay, and I just want to say, one of the things, in looking through this proposal and having done this kind of stuff on a different level for hazardous waste sites, we don't have the expertise in-house for this. This is the kind of thing that a company that just does it establishes that baseline for us, and, you know, also that gives us the credibility, should we go for grants, that it's not, you know, a piecemeal here and there for, you know, Mark Lockaby, we're looking at one piece, you looking at another piece, Public Works guys looking at another piece. Does that make sense to you? I mean, to me, this, this proposal was quite comprehensive with the software, et cetera. What do you think?
Yeah, and they'll be leaning on us staff heavily for our expertise.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have to know the facilities.
Correct.
To walk them through, and they'll be asking questions. They'll be checking with finance and what we've done. So it's not that they're just going off on their own. They still will be relying on in-house staff, right?
Yes.
And then the other piece, I think Heather brought up, that I think was really important. We're in this mode now of, we're fixing emergencies as they come. So here we are, I don't think, you know, I've been on this council for a long time, Mr. Egger much longer than me, but I don't think we're in a position to do what Ross did, to say they're going to spend 20 million or 10 million, or whatever the heck they're going to do. But at least if we know where those pieces are, where the potential failures are, then we can move and bid them out and get cheaper prices than when we're just calling saying, hey, the roof's falling in, right?
Exactly. Well put.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Do I have other questions from council members? If not, I'm going to ask just a couple. Oh, I didn't realize that. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if it's a question, but the, I'll try to make it a question. We, we have, I think, a fair amount of people in our, in our town that work for us, from Jeff to Mark, to people in Public Works. They know these buildings, especially some of the guys know the buildings really inside out. And what companies like the ones that you're looking about possibly hiring, they're going to use these guys anyway, like you said. I mean, without someone carting them around to seven different buildings and showing them where all the problems are, really, you just need to document what the problems are. I don't think you guys can't do this, to be honest with you. We already pay you to do this kind of stuff. And so, you know, I have to take care of a lot of buildings and, and it's just common sense kind of stuff. You've got a great crew. You've got some great people at town hall. I think you guys get together and you make your plan, and I don't think you need this at all. And by the way, it used to be that people that worked for our town knew how to write grants and try to get grant money. So I'm against spending any money.
And I want to make sure that we do questions now, and then we do comments later. So I get it. I mean, it's, and I think those would be great comments.
Here's my question. Do you agree?
Yeah, so anyway, you know, I'm not trying to be rude, but theoretically, the point is to ask the questions now, listen to the public, and then come back with comments. The questions that I do have at this point are, so we budgeted for this. Did I hear that? Yes. So this is in our budget. We budgeted for this. We planned for this. This is not a sudden, you know, hey, we're going to spend a bunch of money. The other question is, you know, I had some concern about the, you know, we don't have a CMMS, so what happens with this wonderful data they're going to provide us? Like, we don't have that, that computer system that they're talking about, that they would provide us data to feed into. How are we using the data they're giving us, or how they're going to provide it to us if we don't have that?
Right, so they, they would give us access to be able to see that, and so.
I guess there's a cup, three-year period or something?
Yes, and so we'd be able to use that. But we're different from, say, a much larger city or organization where we'd be constantly updating that with, oh, yeah, we replaced a boiler here. Oh, we did the roof over there. You know, our, our buildings are just seven, so I think we'll be able to track progress pretty well.
And would we, are we suggesting that somehow we would exclude the fire station, or that there would be some sort of cost decrease because the fire station has already been somewhat assessed in the process of figuring out the remodel, or?
We would certainly not send them to do the same things that the remodel designer has already looked at. The remodel is interior to the building, so I would imagine that there are still systems that are, you know, within the shell of the building that need to be assessed, and that it would be helpful for us to know if there's, say, a looming superstructure issue there, for example.
Okay, great. Do I have any other council member questions? And again, we have time to make comments after public comment. So let's get to public comment. Mr. McIntosh.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I don't know what the feedback is. First off, I'd like to agree with Michael Garen Gully. We have plenty of staff to do this. Something else to consider if you go through this process, that you could be in default, since you bore against some of these buildings. So if you illustrate a structural defect, that will put your bonding and your financing in jeopardy. Two, I would like to ask the town manager why she changed her evaluation process on this and looked at them, discussed who's most qualified, but didn't use the same criteria for the Park Road project, where no, that has to go to an unqualified person for the least amount. And three, trying to say it as nicely as I can, I continue to see that you refer to Mr. Egger and Mr. Garen Gully, and you interrupt them. Every time they're saying something, you interrupt them. And it's really rude, and it's offensive to the public. I want to hear each and every one of you guys speak. You ask us not to interrupt you, but I see you continually interrupting them if you don't want to hear what they're saying. So I hope you'll answer my questions, and I hope you'll use that as not beaten on you, but constructive criticism to improve how you treat some of your fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mark Bell. You know, the way things are going, there may not be a FEMA for three and a half, but then the next three and a half years, and good luck getting grants. When the flood hit in 2005, 2006, they wouldn't even raise, even consider raising the city hall and police station to above the flood grade. So I think you're flapping in the wind as far as that goes. $36,000 might go a long way to helping public work, public works department be paid at what's considered low income in Marin County, which is $104,000 a year. None of them are close. And they also know the buildings. They know every street. They know every flood place. They know where all the dry rot is. They already know it. And if it really came down to where you wanted bids, we have a town full of contractors, and I'm sure that we could find a group of them who would volunteer their time to put something together. Three to six months, if you talk to the public works staff and a few other people, you can probably do it in a week and have this all together. And as far as, you know, having to go to school for five to six years to be able to make a PowerPoint presentation, I find an exaggeration.
Mayor, Councilor Kamer.
Mayor, Council, Rick Kammer, Fairfax.
Thank you.
You know, whereas I'm really someone who will, will always think we should hire somebody in-house or local above a consultant, I looked at this somewhat closely, and Bureau Veritas is not a local company. They might have a local office, but they have 1,380 other offices around the world. They are a huge mega corporation worldwide. And one of the other, and their proposal looks fantastic, incidentally. In their proposal, they identify approximately 250 hours to be dedicated to this project, and that works out to be about $145 an average per hour, which is reasonable for an appraisal of this type. There's another contractor in there, Cappy, it's actually Cappy, in the, in the staff report, it's written as Kappa, but there is actually Cappy, and they're a second-generation architectural firm that's based in San Rafael. The Sun runs the second generation, is doing it, and they have, if you look at them, they have references from San Anselmo, from Sausalito, from many local jurisdictions. They do this type of work, and they are local. They truly are local, and they're a small business. Additionally, the first principal, the father, that would be Ray, he currently operates out of Pacific Palisades, which is impacted by our, by that wildfire this year. So he would be tuned in on how to protect Fairfax and Fairfax's assets for something like a wildfire incident. I think we should look at them more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, speaking from downtown Fairfax. So Bureau Veritas, sounds like they're very qualified, and it might make sense to use them for some things if we weren't in a deficit. On the consent calendar, there is financial report that shows that this town has a million and a half dollar operating deficit. Now, I know, because I'm here and I'm paying attention at that mid-year budget update, that there's an expectation that maybe it'll be $800,000 less or $700,000 less because there's higher taxes. All right. Well, we're still in an operating deficit, so why would we be looking to spend more money? Well, maybe we need to spend money on maintenance. Okay, I'm with you on maintenance, that's good. But if you do this, as Mr. McIntosh pointed out, you risk encumbering and devaluing your collateral that you put up for bonds, all of our town buildings or a majority of them, if that's correct, maybe somebody can correct me on how many buildings have been pledged for collateral. I don't think you're in a position to start spending money, bottom line, and I think the record shows that and the financial statements show that. You spent $32,690 on an ill-advised study for a bond that was indicated to fail. This is another $36,000. And let's just say that based on this, you then decided, well, we're going to go, we've got a lot of money, we're underwater, it's two, three, four hundred thousand, million dollars, whatever the number is, to fix all of our buildings and to build extra high rises and accommodate more staff.
Thank you.
You're going to spend around $100,000 that you don't have.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody online?
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Sean, followed by an unnamed person. So Sean, you are unmuted. You can now unmute yourself.
Good evening, Council. Sean Fitzgerald, Fairfax Park. Yeah, the reasons I heard given for this study tonight was that it's required or it's important to have in order to secure grants. And so I guess my question here is, did we already have one of these studies in place when we secured the $1.7 million Park Road drainage grant? Or did we have this kind of study in place when we got the FEMA grant to redo the pavilion? That was nearly 1.5 million. I'm just curious, because if we need these things to get those grants and then we mismanage those grants, because we don't actually have enough funds to secure the portion of the grant that the town is required to put up, what's the point entirely? The pavilion, I mean, even Councilmember Hellman said she can put her hand out and feel a leak. I don't think we need someone professionally to tell us that the pavilion needed to be replaced. We had an opportunity to do that in 2019, and the town lacked the funds and did not execute on the bond. We could have rehabilitated the pavilion entirely with a massive grant. It was a six-to-one match. Heather mentioned that, you know, if everything's an emergency, we don't have time to get good bids, but the Park Road project went out to bid 30 days before that grant expired. That had nothing to do with the emergency. Park Road has been a disaster for the entire time I've lived here. We've been reporting those drainage issues for years, and we had the grant on the books for years, but someone just did not execute properly. So we went to bid with 30 days left on that grant, and they did not set any standards such that we chose the lowest bidder who had less than two years in business and had submitted his DBA two months before this grant was due, who couldn't sum his bid correctly and had never done a project for greater than 300,000, and we gave him a $1.8 million bid. So I disagree that we should be spending the $36,000 to be able to secure more grants. I think we need to save that money so that we can acquire the grants and comply with our portion of the funds required to actually complete the grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
The next speaker is a caller from an iPad. You are unmuted.
Hi, this is Liz Frohnerberger. I don't know why my name doesn't show up because I filled in the little Zoom thing. But so two quick things. I think, I think I agree with the people who've spoken that we don't really need to spend this money in this way. I feel like our Public Works people really do have the expertise to, to show, to show us what needs to be done. And I think someone suggested getting some contractors to give some bids and some ideas. I just, I just feel like the money could be better spent, regardless of whether that money was actually, it has already been set aside for this, we could certainly use it other ways. And then the other thing is I want to tag on to what Mac said. It has been consistent since Egger and Garen-Gully came on board. Lizel, you interrupt them or you try to speed them along really consistently, and you don't do that to, to the other two council members. And I would invite you to go back and watch how you do that. Your impatience with each of them is, is pretty apparent, and, and I think both of them have actually been really nice. I think I would have, I think I would have bit back a little bit. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. And so I don't know if people are lining up to give public comment again. Can we do that or is that done now that we've done Zoom? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Just asking because sometimes we've had this order thing about like, oh, after we do Zoom, it's over. So I just want to make sure this is the right thing to do, and I'm happy to have people comment.
Thank you. I just want to respond to the people who have talked about you interrupting. I've sat here and watched it, and it's because it's a question period and the, and the council people were not asking questions, they were making comments.
Thank you. And then that's good. I think what we need to focus on, though, with this item unfortunately, is that we can only talk about the issue at hand?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Oops. Ling Shen?
Yeah. So Ling Shen, I live in Dominga, and it's still on, right? Yeah? So I just wanted to add my voice to say that I don't think it's, it's wise to send that money for consulting, that the Public Works people know what needs to be done and would be sufficient to, to have their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I see one more. Okay, one more speaker. Thank you.
I would like to get input from Public Works Department, hear them respond to this, and ask them if they think they're qualified to do this. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're at the end of public comment, and I'm just going to put out there that.
We have one more caller.
We got one more comment? Is there somebody online?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to get somebody online. Looks like Mr. Bell would like, oh, he's thinking, turning it up. Thank you so much.
Jenny, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I, generally speaking, don't participate in town council things. So what I'm saying is really, like, 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 just a general impression of the tone of this meeting. And I find it really combative. Everybody is just fighting with everybody, and I don't know how anything can ever get done with that kind of whatever energy in the room. I also want to comment directly to the topic at hand, because I know that's what I'm supposed to do, and ask, well, and, and agree with the previous speaker by saying, we should ask the town maintenance guys whether they feel qualified to do this work and have the proper equipment and skills. But also, something that is, seems to me like a big question is, there's a huge question of liability, because this is government work. It's not just having somebody over to like, you know, put up a new fence in the backyard. There are different and more stringent standards that need to be adhered to, is my understanding. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we're, is that it? Okay, pulling it back. So first off, I'm going to clarify one thing, which I said at the beginning of the meeting, which is, it is the mayor's job to maintain order, and I am not attempting to be rude to anybody. I'm inviting people to make their comments. When it is time to make those comments, and generally speaking, the way that public meetings go is that you have a staff report, and then the council asks questions of staff. They don't make a statement, a political statement, or a statement about their belief about what's happening. They ask questions to clarify. We go to the public and we listen to the public first, because we want to get all of the information before we come to a decision. We come back here and we deliberate, and that's when you can make a statement, and that's when you can, you know, say what your beliefs are about the issue that we're discussing after having listened to everybody. So I'm not trying to be rude, I'm simply trying to direct people to speak when it's appropriate to speak. So I want to bring it back and make sure that we have addressed some of the public's questions. And I think one of the most important questions that came up was there's some confusion about the process for bids for a public, I think it's a public services versus a construction or contracting bid. Could you explain what the differences and why this was different than the Park Road?
Mayor, if I may, I'll start because I think I can deliver this in layman's terms, and then we may want to turn it over to the town attorney. So there are essentially two types of bid processes in local government. The first one is the one that we used in this, in this case, which is for services, for consulting services. And this is based on professional services, and this is based on qualified, not bids, but proposals. So these are, you're looking for the, the best group or person who can deliver the, the professional service that, that you need. So do they understand the work the best? Do they offer the most closely matched services to what you need? And you can consider the cost, but it does not have to be the, the final only lowest bidder. So the second type of procurement is a, is a lowest bid, and that is for public works projects where they are completely mapped out by an engineer. They are drawn out, you will do this, you will use this material, you will, it will be this long, it will be ending here, it will be starting there. It's very, very specific, and it comes out as a bid book. And then various contractors can bid on that. And they are bidding typically on line items. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have this much for asphalt, this much for steel, this much for labor. They are also required to use prevailing wage. That's a state requirement. And we are required to take the lowest bidder. The, the lowest bidder is all it's about. It is extremely, extremely difficult to remove a contractor for being unqualified. It is not, we know this other one better, or we, we, we had a better experience with one or the other. You cannot use that. You will be sued if you use those. And in fact, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald called in about this. We actually did send a letter from our attorney explaining this, so I'm not sure where the disclarity is. But I just want to be really clear, there's just two types. One is based on qualifications mainly, and the other is just the lowest bidder.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, just to bring the question back, and we don't need a long answer, my understanding is that we are not in a operating deficit.
Correct. So we have a flow of funding that comes in from the county. That's our main source is property taxes. And as you know, you pay property taxes twice a year. And so to just summarize, the county pays us twice a year. And so throughout the year, you will see revenues below expenditures at certain points because we're living off the savings between those two periods, if you will.
You also explained that we're on the TETER plan. Maybe you can explain that. That means we're guaranteed.
Yes. So the TETER plan is against state law, and if counties participate, which most do, and Marin is one of them, then the amount of property tax that the county estimates they should be collecting, they guarantee to pay us, whether or not they have people who don't send in their taxes on time or don't send in their taxes at all.
Okay, so I'm going to move to other council member comments or questions. Okay, council member caller, and I will try to say council member about people, if that's what the public would like, it's a mouthful.
You don't have to. You can call me Barbara. I'm okay with that.
Babs.
I go to that, too.
Babs.
Okay, you can call me Babs. A lot of people do. So I would just say, this is a very comprehensive program. There is software involved. I have tremendous respect for our Public Works guys, but they do not have the capability to do this. And I am pleased, when I first looked at the timeline, it was out of date because this has been sitting for a little while, so I wasn't clear on how long it would take. I think three to six months is good. I think shorter is better. And I also think I want to just echo what the town manager said. Our staff are fully booked, and we also know that our planning director is stepping in here to lead this effort with help from Mark Lockabea, with help from staff, since at this point we have, we're recruiting for a Public Works director. So I think it's important we get this baseline done. I, you know, I'm a consultant, too. This is a really comprehensive plan, and I think it's actually, I looked at the hourly rates, they're very reasonable. I'm supportive of moving forward. I think it gives us a baseline. And true, Mr. Bell mentioned, we don't know what's happening with FEMA, but I think there are other grants possible, and I think it will help us just really have a good baseline since I've been here with our town manager, Abram. with our town manager Abrams, we, you know, this building was always freezing. You guys were always freezing over there. One of the things we did is we put in a heat pump and an air conditioner, which had never existed in this building before, and got an incredibly great price on that. I think $28,000 for this building from the turn of the century. And I used the same people in my house, because I was getting crazy bids. So I'd like to see us do things in a more, you know, planned. I'm more of a planner. So I think this will help us plan, but I don't think we should have an expectation out there that we're going to be able to spend $10 million to get all our buildings perfect. But I think it can help us plan for, what are the critical things? What are what we have to do now? And I also want to say something about the pavilion. We knew, the reason why we turned down that grant was because we knew the grant wouldn't even close to get to what we needed to fix that building. And so we decided to wait to see if there was another grant opportunity in the future that would be more money, because we know the roof alone is a few hundred thousand dollars, several hundred thousand, a million?
The estimate a few years ago was 800,000.
Yeah, so now it's a million. So we didn't turn that down because we didn't have the money. We didn't have the money to spend for a five or more million dollar project on the pavilion. So I'd like to see us do this, and I think having this in place, then we really need to look at, what are the critical things that, you know, we don't want surprises. So I'm supportive of moving forward on this. Thank you.
Right, so.
Yes.
Councilmember Garen Gully, I'm gonna go with him and.
Right. Well, I had the opposite experience and actually managed quite a few buildings. And this probably is a, I feel like this is like a cookie cutter type operation. They're gonna take a lot of staff time up to get information. So the staff's gonna get this information for them anyway. They'll probably plug it into some sort of computer program and pop out something at the end of the day. I've had buildings that were done, where people came in, not, a little bit different than what we're talking about right now. And, you know, it was whatever, $5,000 for absolutely nothing. And, and we still had to go up there and do it ourselves. If you need a roof, you call a roofer. If you need a, you, look at, did, did you call, maybe you did. Did you do, use a consultant for this job?
No.
Okay, that's my point. I understand, right? And that's my point. My point is, we, we should have the mindset that we're not going to be using consultant after consultant. It's not, actually, this is one of the less, least, less expensive consultants that I've heard about in this town. We need to get out of that mindset. We need to be more hands-on. We need to do these jobs ourselves. We, we don't expect the crew in the Public Works Department to put together the whole plan. We have other levels of management to do that, but they're gonna gather the information anyway, even for this group of people that want to come in. And I'm sure they're a great group, but it's a cookie cutter program. I guarantee it. That's why they have how many different places. So my point is, is we, that we gotta learn how to do things ourselves, and it's not magic. My uncle built the Little League announcer's booth. Okay, that's the kind of where I'm coming from. And the point is, is now, whatever, we look at this building or the other buildings, I think we can figure these things out ourselves. They, we know more about it than the consultants do, 100%. And we combine a team. We have the crew that knows what's going on. We have great people like Jeff, they're experts, and Mark Lockaby. And you put together a plan, and you learn to live within your means, and you fix it as you go along, as you get the money and as the projects present themselves. So that's not a form of a question, I know. Do you agree? That's my question. I know. It's not really, I know, I know I don't need to do it. I know. That was a joke, okay? The, because here's the deal. I, I do make statements, because I'm trying to get the point across that we can do, we can save a million dollars a year in consultants' fees if we just quit hiring consultants. And that money can go right into our streets, or we can pay our Public Works employees more money, or whoever else deserves more money. So that's my point. So I'm against spending any money on consultants, because we're smart enough to do it ourselves.
Okay, Councilmember Hellman.
Yes, so, thank you. I think we've heard from our town management that our staff doesn't have the time and the bandwidth and, or the skills to do this. So yes, they know what might need to be fixing here and there and every, in all the buildings, but what's in here and what you need for a facilities plan, I don't know that the Public Works Department, and I would be curious to hear their thoughts, too, but I also don't think it would be appropriate in putting them on the spot and making them feel uncomfortable about that. So I do think information is power, and along the lines of what Councilmember Kohler was saying, we need to have a vision. We have to get out of this mode of reactivity, right? We were freezing in this building, and then we got the heater. We were sweating it out, and then we got. We, we've had so many crises, and that's what's, that, that fed our conversation last year in the planning, the strategic planning session where we agreed that this would be a deliverable, and so I'm glad to see it. We need to understand the state of all of our buildings or assets and, and help us prioritize what's, what's, what's in the most dire need. I'm, I'm concerned about the pavilion very much. It doesn't look good every time I go in there. It doesn't look good. I think it needs a lot of work. And I don't know that, back to our staff, I don't know if our Department of Public Works Department can assess the, the scope of the need there. I mean, it's, they're not civil engineers. They're not engineers. And, and day to day, they're not costing out this, this information. So with all respect to the, the team, that's, that's not what they do. So yeah, I, I would like to see us proceed. I think it's a very reasonable, what we're getting for it, software or not, what we're getting for this amount of money is, I think will be really valuable for us to plan. You know, for so many years, the streets were neglected, and look at where we are now. If we don't come up with a plan for our facilities, we're gonna start having some problems.
Councilmember Egger, did you have comments?
Sure. Thank you. You know, Ross had, Ross had a study of their buildings down there. And they found out the firehouse needed an awful lot of work. And they made the decision, what was it, four years ago, to abandon the firehouse and allow the service to come from San Antonio. Now two council members are rethinking that whole thing. And, and they're concerned about not having a firehouse at Ross. So I'm wondering if, if we have, you know, if we have them study our firehouse and find out it's in really bad shape. We don't, right now, we don't have the million and a half dollars to do the repairs that, and the, and the remodel and upgrades that, that are planned, even. I mean, we're looking for a million and a half dollars. We're gonna have to borrow it from somebody. You know, I, I, I think we've gotta, we've gotta slow down a bit and, and, and take our time and do what needs to be done. We must have reports on the pavilion if we know how bad it is. Somebody must have reports on that pavilion. So to, to spend more money having reports on something we already know needs a lot of upgrades, doesn't make a lot of sense, until we have, figure out what, how we're gonna pay for it. I, I don't know where we're gonna get the million and a half dollars for the firehouse now. And, 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 you know, I, I think we've, we have nothing, nothing, no plans for, for raising that money other than borrowing it from either Sleepy Hollow Fire Protection District or the County of Marin. And then we've got more bills to pay. Yeah, I, I think we, we take care of the firehouse first, get that done, get it completed, and then move on to the other buildings before we, you know, take on all the other, all the buildings at the same time.
I don't, I don't know that we heard anyone suggesting that we take care of all the buildings at the same time. This is gonna be a planning document.
Good.
It's an assessment.
Thank you.
Yeah. And as far as Station 18 is concerned, that, there was severe damage done to Station 18. There was a flood, and then there was mold and rat infestation. We don't have any of that happening at Station 21.
And you gotta razz all the buildings and remove them from the location. You're in a floodplain. Come on. We know we're in a floodplain. I mean, if, if you have to hire a consultant every time you turn around to do something in town here, forget it. You're in the wrong business.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're kind of getting to the end. I'm just gonna ask a question. How many staff do we have?
Total or in DPW?
Total.
Total 33 FTEs.
And how many of those are?
Police.
In the Police Department?
21 in Police.
Right, so we have very lean staff, right? We have very lean staff, and right now, we don't have a DPW director.
Leanest in the county, which is pretty lean.
I think we have the smallest staff to population ratio of any community, or at least we used to.
Yes, absolutely.
Right. So, I mean, I think we've heard a bunch of comments here about how we're both going to cut staff, but somehow also not use consultants. I just don't see how that adds up. I do think that we need to be planful and, and mindful, and I think that in the past, we've done a lot of kind of like, pay as you go, patch as you go, kind of projects, which has led us to kind of the situation we're in now, and people are demanding that we fix our infrastructure. I think this would be a step towards fixing our infrastructure, just as doing the pavement management plan was a step towards fixing our pavement and assessing which roads need to be fixed first, and which ones we can afford to fix first. So, I mean, I think in the past, we've often been penny wise and pound foolish in terms of not being planful, not being mindful, you know, just trying to nickel and dime everything and letting things fall apart in the meantime. So for me, I'm concerned about having a good plan. We did budget for this, so this is not like coming out of the blue. We budgeted for this particular activity. I wanted to also note that Sausalito and Mill Valley also use this firm. Sausalito is even smaller than we are in terms of population. So obviously, you know, they have, whatever they have, 1,380 offices around the country, or whatever it is, somebody said. That sort of says to me that there is a need across all kinds and, kinds of towns and cities for this type of service. It's not just this weird thing that we came up with out of the blue. And I understand the concern about being careful with budget, but this is something we actually budgeted for. So I am, you know, fine with moving forward with it, because we, we already had this in, in the works. And I do want us to continue to really focus on infrastructure, because that's something that I think we've heard from the public they want us to do, is to get the infrastructure fixed. And so that's my comment. So if anybody'd like to make a motion or make further comments, let me know.
Well, since I'm the one constantly making motions, I guess I'll go ahead. What is it, like, I'm the only one here? Okay, adopter, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a professional services agreement with Bureau Veritas to provide the town a Fairfax with a facilities condition and needs assessment in an amount not to exceed 36,312.
I'm gonna second it. Councilmember Egger.
No.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
No.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
And Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Blash, I just want to mention, it's 10 o'clock, so I'd like to make, so I, I want to ask a question of my fellow council members. I know that the Charter City discussion was very important. I'm just wondering if it would be better to move it to the May meeting, if anybody, if you're, if you're not supportive of that, I'm just asking the question. How do you feel about it?
Well, I can give you a quick update.
Well, I mean.
What do you, do you want to move it to the next meeting, or do you want to consider it at this meeting, I think is the question right now?
I'm gonna ask for a continuance anyway, but I'd like to give you a quick update. I've been listening.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't I just ask the question first, and then you could do the update? Because if you're okay with the continuing it, then I would make a motion that we continue the Charter City discussion, and then you can make your update. And then we continue on with the consent calendar. So is that okay with the rest of you?
Well, how long do we think this would take?
I think it's gonna be kind of lengthy.
So can, if, if we're gonna bring it back to, to the next meeting, we should make sure it's at the front. That should be a requirement. That's the first thing we hear at the next meeting.
Would that work for our agenda next month? How much do we have?
We, we have a full agenda for May as well, and we'll do the best we can to bring it.
Do you think this would be appropriate for a special meeting?
I think we already have a special meeting.
That's like the budget meeting, never mind.
So why don't you guys work to see if you can move it as close to the front as possible?
I'm fine with that.
Is that all right with you, council?
It's on this meeting, right?
Right, but Councilmember.
I understand what's happening. I don't mind bumping it, but if you're gonna take something from here and bump it to the next meeting, should you go to the front of the line? That's all I'm saying. It makes sense, I realize, but.
I think, I think what we're saying is, it might be the second item, but it's not gonna be towards the end, right?
Right.
Okay.
And I want to say that I'm the person that really pushed to have this on the agenda, because it felt like people are very concerned about hearing it, wanted to know more, were excited. But if it's okay with the person who was.
It sounds like it was.
Was Mr. Egger, so let me just finish. Then I am okay with continuing it. I just wanted to put out there that, yes, I want to make sure it gets heard, and yes, I want to make sure that we get it on the agenda at a time when people can, you know, listen to it. And if it's okay with the person who authored it, that we continue it, then I'm okay with it.
I think he's saying yes. Did someone want to second that motion, and then we can finish that, and then Councilmember Egger can give his update?
I'm not seconding it, no.
You want to second?
No, I'm not seconding it.
You, you're gonna second?
I'd like to make a report. I, I've put an awful lot of.
I just said, Councilmember Egger, I said if we could get through this motion, then you can give your update.
And I, I do have a.
The only thing we're continuing is this one item.
Right.
Yes.
Right. And I have the one question I have, which is that if we continue this item, and then Mr. Egger gives an update, then we have to open this to public comment as though it was an agenda item anyway, right? So we're gonna have to do the whole public comment thing.
Why don't we put Mr. Egger's comment in council reports and comments?
In other words, you just wanted to, he will do this when we get to.
How about he comments now, and then we vote on it?
Because we need to follow the order of the meeting, and so we're gonna make sure that he gets to speak, but we need to make sure, because this is an unusual thing to be asking to make a report, but not have it at a time when people can comment or be part of a regular discussion. We're just trying to figure out how to deal with it.
So I think we already heard a recommendation. Councilmember Egger, are you okay with waiting till we get to the council member reports to give that update?
We're at the item. Let's open the item. I'll give you a quick report. You make your motion to continue it, that item, and I'll, I'll second your motion.
But then we have to do public comment.
Well, I don't know if anyone wants to comment on it or not. Who knows?
Yeah. Yeah, because we can't have people shouting from the audience, but.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do it that way. So why don't we have Councilmember Egger do his update, and then I'll make the motion after we take public comment.
Does that work?
I want to ask that, that works legally.
I'm trying to understand if.
So what we're saying is, we're gonna continue the whole staff report for the Charter City, but we want to just have one little bit. We want to continue the rest of it, but Councilmember Egger would just give an update on Charter Cities.
And he would take public comment?
Right.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not a discussion item so much as it's just a report? I, I guess I'm confused, but.
Okay, so.
All right, so.
Okay, let, let me just, let me just speak to the issue rather than having a whole staff report. Five Charter Cities, Carson, Redondo Beach, Torrance, Delmore, and Whittier initiated a lawsuit in early 2022 against the state of California, claiming that Senate Bill 9 is unconstitutional and invalid against Charter Cities. A number of cities, League of California cities, file amicus briefs, and it went to trial. The court, Superior Court, ruled in favor of the five Charter Cities. The court, Superior Court, ruled in favor of the five charter cities and awarded them $271,243 in costs and fees. State Attorney General Rob Bonta appealed that decision. It's been going through a process. And I just had an email this evening from one of the lawyers. I'll read that to you. "Hi, Councilmember Egger. Their record on charter, on the charter cities' appeal," because I had asked what was the status of the Bonta appeal of that decision against charter cities. "Hi, Councilmember Egger. Their record on the charter cities' appeal was completed a few weeks ago. I'll let my associate, Shokhan Patel, who is copied on this invoice, provide you with the dates when the briefs are due." So they haven't even briefed it yet at appellate court. And, and, and so I'm in agreement that we should continue this item because I'll have some more information next month, okay? But I just wanted to give you an update as to, as to what's going on.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we have an update from our town attorney.
You do? And so what the state legislature did in response to that case was, I believe, SB 450 and mooted the whole point. So they specifically said, yes, it applies to charter cities. They fixed the issue in that case. So we can go ahead and wait and see what happens on appeal, but I have already consulted with the housing attorneys at Best, Best &amp; Krieger about this case, and they said it's not going anywhere and the legislature has already cut the legs out from under it. So, but we're happy to wait and see what happens.
Scott Weiner, the Senate State Senator that's running all of these bills through the legislature, he's now including in every one of his bills that this, this legislation includes charter cities in every one of his bills. And so we're going to find out whether or not he could do that, I think. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the update. And I think we, unless people have questions of Mr. Egger, I think we have to take it to public comment. Okay. Yes. Okay. Councilmember Hellman.
This is only, thank you, by the way. It was really interesting. I didn't know any of that. This is only pertaining to SB 9, not the dozens of other housing laws that severely reduce local control.
It's about whether SB 9, one of the laws that they passed in the state legislature, that, whether or not it applies to charter cities. That's the issue. Does it apply to charter cities?
Right.
If they can, if they can, if they can prevail, then other state, other state legislation, housing legislation that applies to charter cities may well be attacked.
I see.
So if I may, I'm happy to provide the entire council with an update on this case.
Okay. Is that the thing you're doing now or when we get to?
No. I'll give you a written update on it.
That would be lovely. That would help.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay. So we're going to now, unless there's other, are there any other questions from the dais? Okay. So let's move to public comment. And Mr. Greenberg?
Todd Greenberg here. The financial reports indicate a million and a half dollar deficit, operating deficit. Why would we be spending more money with the town attorney to provide a report on this matter that is still evolving? Why not wait and see what happens before you engage her services when she is $269,000 over budget? That's $269,000 anticipated, just a little over halfway through. We could use that money to fix our roads. So I am against what you just talked about or what she just talked about doing. That's a waste of the town's money, unnecessary. Additionally, part of the reason to move to a charter city is to retain greater local control. In the one vote passes all consent calendar coming up, there's talk about in the report, Mayor Kohler being at the Marin Mayor's Group where they're talking about voicing and maintaining local control. Do you guys believe in local control? Do you believe in SEQA anymore? I'm just missing it. Why wouldn't you be actively following these cases? Ms. Hellman just said that she didn't really understand it. How come you're not following these cases yourselves? Isn't that part of your job? Isn't that why you're up here to take care of Fairfax? I'm missing it. Why are you just spending money like crazy? And why don't you know about these things? I'm following these things. I care about Fairfax. I hope you put in more study. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the room?
Frank, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And I do agree with Todd that I think since this is evolving, let's hold off spending more money with the attorney until there's a point to make a decision. So please retain those funds and apply them to the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the room or on Zoom? There are no speakers on Zoom. Right. Thank you. So I think we're.
So now I'll make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule, moving item four, the charter city discussion to the May meeting, to the extent practical as number one. We're very close to number one.
Second.
Councilmember Egger.
Hi.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes. Great. Thank you. And thank you for bearing with us. That was an unusual item, but it ended up being very useful. So we are now going to move to item number five, which is the consent calendar. And we're going to reiterate that the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action or one vote. In the alternative, in the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have up to two minutes and may only speak once.
Mayor, is it okay if I make comments after we go through public comments? I don't want to pull anything. I just want to make a couple of comments. I'll do it after public comment.
So do we have a motion to move the consent calendar?
No, you have to do public comment.
All right. Don't yell. Getting tired. I always get tired at this time of night. Let's have public comment on the consent calendar.
So I kind of browsed through the Climate and Environmental Quarterly Report, Climate Action Coordinators Compliance List, and the Energy Efficiency Coalition Letter of Support. And I'm not seeing any change in direction of actually doing something. You know, when we hired for $60,000 for his part-time position, I think he started around that and ended at $65,000 for his part-time position. I said, you know, you have phantom power. That's 10 to 15% of a bill, of your bill. You probably know other people. You went to school. You must know other people. Why don't you get appliance manufacturers to put more insulation in refrigerators, like an eighth of an inch or a quarter of an inch? And then I mentioned not that long ago that you need to go to CPUC, excuse me, the California Public Utilities Commission, and get them to scale back their true-up charges. And now Newsom is talking about getting rid of the solar credits that have been in place and were promised when people got their, got their systems put in. I don't see actual movement to do anything. I recommended getting smart, smart strip outlets, which have one dedicated on in case you're stuck with a VoIP phone and you need your modem on all the time, the rest of your appliances are off. We're talking phantom power, eating up 10 to 15% of the grid. And no one in this climate action committee seems to care. Or do you?
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg speaking on the consent calendar. Once again, many items, they're numbered with alphabet. They should be numbered as numbers so you can actually count the number of items in the very small amount of time the public gets to address important items like the town's finances each month, which obviously have big questions and big deficits. It was $3.5 million operating deficit last year, and that's been confirmed by the town's finance director. Other than that, on particular things here, I already mentioned the council member's report from Mayor Kohler, where the mayors of Marin County in the meeting that she attended talked about retaining local control. I don't hear any of that being discussed at the dais. I hear we're ceding our control to the state. Why aren't you fighting for Fairfax? I'm confused. The meeting minutes or reports of council member activities say one thing, but you're doing something different. Other items, approved minutes. My comments in the meeting minutes aren't accurately reflected. Mark Bell has brought it up. Other people have brought it up before. Why are the meeting minutes obscuring people's comments? Barbara Kohler herself as mayor indicated she wanted more detailed records. Why are we going, why is the current mayor pushing for less detailed meeting minutes? I'm confused. I thought we wanted transparency here. What is going on? Again, like Mark said, why aren't we pushing for more sustainability locally? I'm confused. What happened to sustainable Fairfax?
Thank you. Mr. McIntosh.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of us are just confused a whole lot. I would really like to address the consent calendar as a whole. So I've been to almost every single council meeting since 2001. I bought the property in 2002. I've missed very few. In the past, if the public came up and had an issue that they wanted to discuss, it was readily pulled off to engage the public. And you saw fewer PRAs because the public became informed. I've seen Mr. Egger ask for something to be pulled off the consent calendar, and it wasn't. I would like the council to actually bring forth a discussion for a future item on how the consent calendar should be handled and what criteria is available for the public to say, please pull something off. We would like to know about this. We would like to hear how you guys all discuss it and how you'll all vote on it. So please consider that in the future because right now it's just being jammed through. And I appreciate that there are fewer since this last election, and it is clear. But if we had standard criteria that we could all understand, we could all learn more and be a better citizen. And I encourage more people watching these meetings to please come down on our Wednesday evenings. It's hard on all of us, but that's what makes a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
There is one speaker online. Deb, you are unmuted.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, Fairfax. One thing whoever put the consent calendar together refers to the minutes of the January 16th, 2025 town council meeting, which should be January 9th, 2025. On page six of the minutes, some comments I made, I was referred to as Deb. I would appreciate my last name being included because there are more than one Debs in town. I am curious as to why Sam Perry was reimbursed $1,018.05 for materials for the sculpture in the parcade. I did not think that any other people who were given the honor of presenting a sculpture in the parcade were paid for materials. Is that something that we're going to do from now on? Let's see. The, in regards to the credit card reporting, are you all aware that there are 14 different people who have been issued cards? I'm wondering where the controls are, who approves expenditures, or they approve before or after the money is spent? And looking at the, at this new Cal Card report, credit card reporting, I'm noticing that vendor names are sometimes in the description, vendor names are sometimes not. I think vendor names should be included. The same date is given for every transaction when in fact there are different dates for transactions. I'm wondering how this might affect the end of the year reporting if the same date is given and we're rolling over into a different fiscal year. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay. We're going to bring it back. We can't do extensive discussion on these items. And I think it's too late to pull anything since we've already gone through public comment. Is that correct? Hello?
Yeah. I think I just want to make a couple of thank yous. So I'd like to, for retiring the Community Emergency Preparedness Committee, I want to thank Jeremy, I think his name is Nerriman House, who was the chair, and Cindy Swift, who is hanging in there. And I would have liked if their names were stated on the staff report so everybody would know who they were. I also want to mention the, the Energy Efficiency Coalition Letter of Support. I brought that as the representative of MCE for Fairfax. And this is from MCE and the San Diego Community Power Coalition. These are our folks who are fighting to make sure that the energy efficiency money is not cut. Energy efficiency saves an incredible amount of money for every dollar. So this is really, all we're doing is having the mayor sign on to a letter so it's stronger for our lobbyists for MCE and for San Diego to fight this battle at the CPUC and with the governor's office. The last thing I'd like to say is, well, two things. I want to thank Jane Richardson-Mack, John Ramadas, and Deb Benson for continuing to serve on the Tree Advisory Committee and also for their years of service and being willing to step up. The last thing I want to mention, it's been mentioned, I sit on the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee, and one of our charges in there is to issue letters of support or opposition. And in my report, it says what our jurisdiction is. So where there are things that endanger local control, we will typically oppose those. And we have lobbyists for Cal Cities that work on those matters. That doesn't mean that we're always successful, but that's what we do. And we're still fighting at that level. And we do have strong lobbyists with Cal Cities, and sometimes we are very successful. So thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Great. Okay. So moving along to future agenda items.
Do you want a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you. I get.
I'll make that motion and just to say that even though item B says January 16th, the actual consent calendar item for the minute says January 9th. So I'd make a motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
Okay. I'll second that. Councilmember Egger.
I'd like to speak on the motion. Do I get a chance?
If they're brief comments, really typically you don't discuss the, but since we let Councilmember Kohler do it, you can do it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Wait a minute. This is a, this is an item on the agenda. I can't speak to it? I mean, I didn't pull anything from the agenda tonight. I just wanted to speak to it.
I'm not telling you you can't speak. I'm telling you you can speak because we let Councilmember Kohler do it. But I'm simply stating that generally speaking, it is not the proper form to have people, you know, make extensive comments on the consent calendar. So go ahead. So go ahead.
Thank you. On the Climate Action Report, two things are happening. The town of Fairfax will lose 60% of its gas tax money by 2040 if the state EV vehicle purchase meet its goals. So somebody's going to have to come up with a means of financing road repairs in California. It's not just Fairfax. It's every city. It's all 482 cities in California will lose 60% of their gas tax if, in fact, we meet our goals for purchasing EVs. The state of California has also backed off the ban on the purchase of new diesel trucks. That just happened also. So things are changing in Sacramento a little bit, anyway. On the financials, I guess what Fairfax spent $961,000 on using credit cards in the past three years. At one time, Fairfax required a purchase order for certain purchases over dollar amount. And I'm not sure how we're controlling the cost with the credit cards. How many of our employees have credit cards? I guess there's a number of them that have credit cards. Who monitors the purchases before they're done?
Right. So those purchases have to be only for town business, and they have to have receipt. Thank. Oh, it's still, we're hearing a buzzing sound. Sorry. So those credit card statements then have to come with a receipt. There's a coding of what it was for, and then also a text description. So an example could be, I have a town credit card, and I went to the CalCities training. And so I used that Cal credit card to pay for lodging and any, you know, meals that were required there. And so then I would have those receipts attached to the credit card statement with the coding.
I'm talking about $961,000 in three years. So there's more than just a couple of trips. You know, I've been going through some of the credit card bills, and there needs to be better control with the expenditures. I mean, I don't know what the limits are with the credit cards. And how many credit cards are out there? Are there 10, 5, 15? I don't know. Who's got credit cards? But that doesn't seem to be a very good way to control the expenditures in the town.
And I think we asked that that be brought, that information be brought to us during our budget discussion a little earlier tonight. So I think that we could get more information at our budget discussion, which is on April 18th.
So I've asked the question before, how many employees do we have? And I was told to look at the budget. And then I asked how many credit cards are out? And I'm told, well, you can maybe find out at the budget time when we're discussing the budget. But I mean.
I think we also discussed the number of employees there. Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor, if I may. So typically, if one wants to have this in-depth conversation, you would pull the item from consent. You would not have this kind of discussion within consent so that you could make sure that people know that you're going to have this discussion. And if you're wanting to have robust discussions at each meeting about routine reports, then maybe we should consider putting those on the regular agenda. But you're going to have to spend all of that time, and it's already typical, you know.
Right. And I'm.
Hours later.
Thank you. And that's why I keep trying to kind of impose that order on the meeting, and I guess doesn't really go anywhere. So, yeah, I mean, typically, we would have to pull those if we were going to go into that type of in-depth discussion. And we did discuss earlier tonight the number of staff that we have. And we did discuss bringing the credit card issue back for the budget to the first budget discussion on April 18th.
The Finance Director is not here this evening, so that's why they didn't pull it, because we could have gotten any answers. I just wanted to make a few general comments before I vote to approve the consent calendar tonight. That's all.
I know. It's just, I'm just going to reiterate that. That is not standard process in most public meetings, but we are letting people do it since we already let Councilmember Kohler do it. But we can't go into extended discussion about those items, unless they're polled.
So I made a motion to approve the consent calendar. Did somebody want to second that? Are you through, Councilmember Egger?
Did you have more to say?
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Egger.
Aye.
Councilmember Garen Gully.
No.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Blash.
Yes. Okay. So thank you for catching me when I almost didn't do public comment. Get kind of tired around consent calendar. Getting a second wind now. So we are going to move on to future agenda items. And again, this is an item where we cannot have extended discussion. And part of the reason we can't have extended discussion is that we did not let the public know we were going to be discussing these issues. And that is a transparency issue. We need to have it agendized if we're going to go into an extended discussion or deliberation about something, because it's only fair for the public to know in advance what we're talking about. And then they have to be able to be here and know that we're going to discuss it. So, you know, if we have future agenda items, they've got to be like a couple of sentences. We can't like go back and forth on them. I did want to just go down the list of things that I believe that we have as future agenda items already. And then we can move on to any other future agenda items. So we were going to do Charter Cities tonight. That was Councilmember Egger's item. We will continue that to the next meeting, but we will get to that. We talked about having, Councilmember Garen Gully wanted to do a park rules committee. We need to clean up some issues before we get to that, but that is on the agenda. And that's something that we will do in the future. We, yeah, and I think that we have, you know, kind of on the agenda as a future agenda item that a lot of people want to hear about is the e-bikes ordinance, which will probably come next month. And Town Manager, did I get everything that we have pending before we move on to the things that we're going to have suggested from people? Yes. I think you mentioned e-bikes. Yes.
Okay. So future agenda items.
I have nothing, but I think Mike has some.
Okay.
Right. So today, we had some great interviews with the artists in residence. That was the meeting prior to this meeting. And all I can, one thing I want to put on the agenda and talk about in public is how I believe the council should be more involved in the hiring process and the interview process of directors and managers of our town. When Frank and I worked together 20 years ago, we did that. And we, it was a great process, and it was very helpful, I think, to the town.
Great.
So I'd like to put that on the agenda. If we can interview the artists in residence, we can interview the top brass in our company, in our town.
Yeah. I'm not totally sure that's legal, but. So there's a suggestion we put that on the agenda, so we can vote on that in a minute. I'd like to suggest action minutes as opposed to the way we're taking minutes right now, largely because of the debates that we're hearing about. He said, she said, I didn't get. And also because it's costing us $15,000 a year. There is no other town in Marin that does anything other than action minutes, except for Ross, their tiny little town. They have almost no deliberations. So I'd like to put that on the agenda. And I would also like to see a study session for the council on the new housing laws that we kind of alluded to tonight. So those are my two items. And then we have Mr. Garen Gully's item. I'm not sure if anybody else has anything else they'd like to add.
I have one. I thought we would do charter town tonight, but for the next meeting, I had sent an email out to the mayor and the council through Christine, asking that we have an item on regarding safety issues in downtown Fairfax, reducing speed limits, putting in additional crosswalks, things like that. And so I'm asking that that be on next month's agenda, since we have festival coming and farmers markets coming.
Okay. I think we already have that item as something that's going to be considered. But I think it's a really good item. And I think we all received a letter from the Town Manager about the grants that we've received to do that kind of work. So I think that we, and we're not doing public comment on this. We're not doing, no, no, no. I'm sorry, Michael. Michael, you need to sit down. You can't come up. You can't come up, and you can't, no, Michael, stop. Michael, you need to stop. Be a gentleman.
Lisa, I have a couple of future agenda topics.
We need to move on.
Mike, the council wasn't finished talking.
Yeah, thank you. So go ahead, Councilmember Kohler.
The Bicycle Pedestrian Committee Commission, or what's the plan for that? Because I know we have the funding, and I know this.
Yeah, that's part of the project, so we'll bring that back with Jeff soon.
Okay. But is that, that's on, did you already list that, and did I miss it?
No, it's, I mean, it's part of the list of projects that Jeff is going to bring back. We had a whole bunch of items that would enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety that kind of came together as a group.
Can I have one more comment about agenda items? Does that include the e-bike situation?
The e-bike situation will be addressed at the next meeting. We're considering an ordinance. Yeah. Yeah.
And then just to set the expectation with the public, we are in a 60-day window for cannabis applications right now. That'll go through the Planning Commission and ultimately come to the council likely summer. July would be my guess.
Yes.
Okay. So that's on the horizon as well, just to.
Okay. All right. So in general, we have tried to vote on these items. So I am going to start with Mr. Garen Gully's, or Councilmember Garen Gully's, suggestion that we have a discussion about how we hire staff. And I think before I do that, I want to know, is that even legal for us to be involved as a council? Because it would have to be in public, right?
No, the council has two employees or two hires, the manager and the attorney, period. The council hires a manager to hire, fire, supervise staff. That's the way the council manager form of government works. So we have had, Heather and I both have had this conversation with Councilmember Garen Gully. And we will continue, I think it's, yeah, that's what we're hearing is your hearing aid, right? Yeah, okay. But we will continue that conversation. And I think we're going to have an additional person speaking with Mr. Garen Gully as well. So we don't think that's a public item.
Right. And I think that would come up also, you know, some of that type of stuff might come up if we had a charter city or something, but we don't. So I don't think that's even something we can vote on because it's basically not legal.
I will say that 20 years ago, we did it.
Yeah, when you had an administrator form of government.
No, a town manager.
And when you were transitioning from administrator to manager.
It's a town manager form of government, and we helped.
Right. Okay, we can't get into.
It was very helpful to the town.
Yeah. We can't get into extensive discussions. So, I mean, we can vote on it, but I think it wouldn't be legal to do it, so. So if somebody wants to make, you know, if we want to just do an up and down vote on whether this is something we'd add to a future agenda.
I would just suggest, it's just, no. There's a whole lot of issues around it. Please let Councilmember Garen Gully talk to our staff and BBK attorneys on it.
Okay. So I think we can't really consider that one because of legality at this time. I would like to have a study session on new housing laws so we're all up to date on what's coming down the pike and what's been passed.
So I would suggest that we consider something not at the next meeting, maybe.
Oh, no, not at the next meeting.
Later on. And I would suggest that it would be worthwhile to do a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Years ago, we did that with Richards Watson, with Ender Kalsa at that time. And we did a joint session with the Planning Commission. And I would do that more as kind of a workshop sort of thing.
Right, right. Exactly. And that's what I'm suggesting. I think those are great suggestions. And I'm not, I do want to also, you know, kind of level set with the public and the rest of the council that just because somebody suggests something doesn't mean it's going to be on the next agenda. It might be four or five months down the line.
Anyway, so I would vote in support of that in a few months. And I would want us to have housing attorneys from BBK do that discussion.
Great.
And the only other thing I'll add is that I think all of us, I don't know that to be true, but I know I have, I know the mayor has. We've all asked the developers of School Street Plaza to host a community forum. And to date, we have gotten no positive response.
I asked them to.
Yeah. We want this very much. We are all shocked. We all have questions, concerns, ideas. We are wanting this, and to date, we have not gotten consent or agreement for them to host, or for us to host.
So part of just addressing some of these issues would be having a study session on new housing laws. Is there anyone opposed to doing that at some point in the foreseeable future? Okay. So I'm going to assume that one's going to go on a potential future agenda. The other thing that I had proposed tonight was adopting action minutes. And so, and I know the Planning Commission is supposed to do that, too. Does anybody else support that or oppose that?
I think it's worth discussing, and I know the Planning Commission is actually in the code.
So it's a discussion. It's not, we're not voting on whether we're doing it or not. We're just voting on whether we should discuss.
Just a discussion.
So what about other council members? How do you feel about having a discussion about moving to action minutes?
Sure. I wouldn't put it at the top of my priority list, but sure.
Councilmember Egger?
I'm not in favor of action minutes. You know, we've got a, when we have quasi judicial hearings.
Yeah. We're supposed to say, are you willing to discuss it at a future meeting?
I'll discuss it at a future meeting if you want.
Okay, but you're not necessarily.
I'm not in favor, but I'll discuss it.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Okay. So I think we have enough people to put that one on the agenda. And again, putting it on the agenda does not mean that you agree to it. It just means you agree to discuss it. Okay.
I support anything, anything the council member wants to have on an agenda.
Well, that's sweet. Okay. So if we have, I'm sorry. Yes, I know that. I'm just letting us get to the end of the comments of the council members before we move on to the Town Manager's report. Because I want to make sure that everybody gets their stuff in before we move on. So if we are at the end of the future agenda items, I'd like us to move to. So first off, we're just going to say council reports and comments. That is on the consent calendar. You can read what we do on behalf of the town. So that's a report on meetings and activities that we've held on behalf of the town, many of them having to do with our council member board and committee assignments. So moving on from there, Town Manager's report. And again, you know, I think we need to reiterate that the Town Manager's report is generally a one-way flow of information, so it is not an item of deliberation, which is why we do not take public comment on the Town Manager's report. I don't know if any of the staff want to make that more clear, but that's what it is.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we've covered pretty much everything at this point, especially with the future agenda items discussion. So I just want to remind folks, this is usually the time where I would say, you know, we may be coming up on a storm or something like that. We're not actually, weather's looking fairly mild. But that, that's what this is for, is it's just one-way communication announcements. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay. That's it. I'd like to adjourn. I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of John Hart, Gary Goddard, and Jesse. So you need to sit down, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Greenberg. We've just, we've already described why. You need to sit down, you're disrupting the meeting, thank you.
Mayor, he's talking about the continuation of open time.
Oh, thank you, okay. Continuation of open time, yes, that's fine. Yeah. Yes, 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 you are correct in that case, thank you.
Absolutely amazing, once again, trying to squash public comment. You know, there are so many people who you prevented from speaking tonight by putting this at the end of the meeting. There were at least four people on Zoom, and at least five people, at least five people in the room. And now I'm, you tried to prevent me from speaking. I'm the only one who gets to speak. And I've had to waste part of my time bringing this up. It's just really amazing how you're running these meetings. As far as what's on the agenda, does it have to be numbered? I see the agenda packet, and I see the Town Manager's report. And what the Town Attorney said earlier was "under consideration" was the key phrase. Here's from the Reporters Committee. Yes, I'm quoting this, yes, during a regular or special meeting, but not during the closed meeting, under both acts, a body must provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address each agenda item under consideration by the body either before or during the body's discussion. California Government Code 1125.7A, Bagley-Keen Act, 54954.3A, Brown Act. Additionally, under the Brown Act, during a regular session, but not during a special session, the public has a right to comment on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So the key is "under consideration." Under consideration, according to Merriam-Webster's, says "being thought about and discussed." Are you thinking about what the Town Manager just said or future agenda items? Under consideration, according to Law Insider, says "under consideration" means the time starting when a chair opens a discussion on a subject or piece of legislation that is not listed on a committee agenda and ending when the committee disposes of legislation, moves on to another item or the agenda or adjourns.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg, thank you. I'm going to clarify for a minute here that I was not trying to squash you. I simply forgot that we had that, and I was reminded by staff and by you, and we let you speak. So if there are other people who would like to speak, and the continuation of open time, which we have been doing for years now, we've continued the open time if it went for more than 30 minutes, has always continued to the end of the meetings. Let's have that. There is one speaker on Zoom. Let's have that person speak. Bob, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor Blash and others. This is Bob Middlestead, eBike Access. I'm sorry to prolong this meeting, but I'll be as brief as I can. I've submitted a written comment that provides a recap on where we are on the Super 73 saga. I want to mention that we've had five accidents involving students from White Hill on throttle e-bikes in the last three weeks that required police and EMT responses. I've identified four immediate steps that the police, I think, can and should take to stop this before there is more blood on our streets, blood on our hands, and so forth. I know that you're gonna take up next month AB 1778, but I just want to try and make the point that that law requiring kids to be 16 to ride throttle bikes, as important as it is, and I was at Tiburon today and encouraged them to pass, to be the first Marin municipality to pass the law, which they did, I'm happy to report. But that is not gonna be a magical solution. It's still gonna require enforcement, and it won't be effective until July or sometime like that. So we're gonna have three or four more months with this serious risk of accidents. The police have enough authority now to stop this. The Fairfax website makes clear that Super 73s and similar throttle bikes are not e-bikes, they're motorcycles, and they're not street legal. And I just wish there was some way for you to talk to the police chief or to somebody and ask them to stop the kids from evading the ban on these kind of bikes that have been imposed by White Hill Middle School, and do that to save our kids and to prevent further accidents. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else online? Is there anyone else in the room? Great, okay, at this point, we will adjourn the meeting. And I do appreciate staff and others reminding me of when to do certain things because sometimes I'm tired and I'm still relatively new. So we are going to adjourn now in memory of John Hart, Gary Goddard, and Jesse M. Solsado.